...an attorney, if I believe I'm correct. And they're going to join together because they have a lot to say.
I'm appearing as a private citizen.
Oh, that's okay. We allow that.
That's preferred.
We got enough lawyers already here, so we don't need to add you to the crowd. Go ahead and enjoy yourself, and please inform us as to what you'd like, please.
Okay, I'm going to just try, I appreciate your inviting us to be here and to summarize the letter, and I know that it was very long, and so what I'm trying to do is just hit the points that have not already been covered in the other letters.
You're going to do the homework that Lisa was supposed to do, is teach them summary, because you allowed us to do that, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to actually read from the letter, but not, I'm going to just read from about a third of it. The, I wrote in regard to the application, obviously, for the drive-in, the 24-hour gas station convenience store with drive-through and car wash, and respectfully hope that you will deny this application. I'm writing primarily as a real estate professional, but also as a lifelong, almost lifelong resident of Lunenburg. After graduating from Lunenburg High School, then college, I taught English at the high school for three years. When my children were growing, I began a career as a real estate agent. I owned my own real estate business, Marble Associates, for eight years, and now continue 35-plus years of full-time representation of buyers and sellers. Since 2008, my husband Donald and I have been residents at Stone Farm Estates. First of all, the goal of situating any structure on any real estate land is termed "the highest and best use." The site was the farm of Stillman Stone, a town clerk and longtime Lunenburg selectman, who purchased the land after fighting in the Civil War. He died in 1931 at the age of 95. That's just a historical note. The neighborhood is now primarily residential, enhanced by local and small businesses. The highest and best use should blend with and complement the existing residential and historical character of the neighborhood. Quiet enjoyment, the right to enjoy and use premises, particularly a residence in peace and without interference. Residents and tenants of housing in residential districts are entitled to the right of quiet enjoyment, which is a key concept of English common law, embodied in the current laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Noise and increased traffic from the applicant's proposed use would impact the quiet enjoyment of neighbors. High-density 24-hour lighting would adversely affect the quiet enjoyment in several directions. Intrusive light will penetrate the woods, the wooded buffer between the proposed project and Stone Farm Estates from October to May, over half the year, when the deciduous trees have lost their leaves. Both sides of Massachusetts Avenue will be negatively impacted by the all-night lighting. Property values. A person's home is his castle, and a homeowner may reasonably expect an amount of appreciation of one's property value. Proximity to a gas station decreases the value, the desirability, and the marketability of a residence. Location, 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 one's best hope for increased value does not include a nearby 24-hour gas station complex. FHA guidelines have traditionally had unacceptable locations, and for many years specifically stipulated that a property within 300 feet of a gas station was ineligible for FHA insurance. That has been relaxed, and now appraisers have some leeway in determining whether a property can be insured by an FHA mortgage, if it is within 300 feet of a gas station. I did have a personal experience in 2008. I represented a seller in Fitchburg, who, at 956 Main Street, the house was next to a, I think it's a prime gas station. A buyer made an offer, the offer was accepted, the buyer had been, had gone through an FHA process of approval. After he applied for the mortgage, it was denied because of the gas station. That buyer went on, and another buyer ended up buying the house. So because of the gas station's proximity, there are people who will not be able to purchase in that area. An interesting note, I think, in the town website shows a planning review of 2010, which includes the statement under the heading "Challenge Now: Maintaining the Character, Particularly of the Center." I submit that your approval of this application would be in direct conflict with this planning goal. From the Lunenburg Protective Bylaws, actually, you know, this is all in, I'm not going to do this, because I'm going to move on.
You're doing just fine for someone that said you might be a little timid.
Thank you. Moving on, there were some facts and concerns, and a car wash is often noisy when in operation, a winter hazard is icing on exit from the facility and continuing onto the main roadway. Pedestrian safety, and I think as someone in other letters have said, this is a key thing. Right now, there is a sidewalk from the center, which stops at the east end of 790 Mass Ave. Numerous residents use the sidewalk and cross in front of the vacant property, which doesn't have a sidewalk, for strolls, for exercise, dog walks, attending events at Marshall Park in the center. The additional traffic entering the gas station car wash facility increases pedestrian danger. The convenience store may attract young people crossing the street from Marshall Park and from the church. I think the safety issue is very serious. Crime, this is just a note, the gas station on Lamonster Shirley Road, which was cited as comparable in its first year of operation, in February of 2014, there was an armed robbery at 2:30 in the morning. I think any overnight business has, is a possible time target, crime target. The highest and best use of the 790 Mass Ave property could blend with the neighborhood, most of the permitted commercial uses would be fine, and best with the allowed residential limited commercial uses consistent with the areas surrounding zoning. A gas station is not automatically allowed in Lunenburg's commercial districts due to its unique aspect. The commercial spot zoning of the site was enabled, was to enable Ed Riley to maintain his package store. It was never contemplated to house a gas station. If a gas station were an automatically allowed right, this hearing would not be required. The foresight of the town zoning regulations asks the ZBA to determine what is right and appropriate to protect the town of Lunenburg, and to act in the best interests of its residents and taxpayers. Then, a comparison of the two properties, the Honey Farm gas station at 134 Lamonster Shirley Road and the proposed gas station on Mass Ave. The Lamonster Shirley Road is in an area of several commercial properties, an industrial park and shopping center, versus a primarily residential area within half-mile of Lunenburg Center. The Honey Farms lot is a 5.19 acre, all commercial. The local, the next-door lot is 40,000 square feet on 3.4 acres, 77 percent of which is limited commercial residential zoning. The Honey Farms site has uninterrupted sightlines to the east, plus 700 feet to a slight curve to the west. The Archer property is 375 feet to a significant curve to the west, plus 800 feet to a curve to the east. In conclusion, the residents of Stone Farm and many of our neighbors strongly oppose the application. With due respect to both the applicant and to the Riley family, we submit that the proposal is an inappropriate project for 790 Mass Ave, and that the application should be denied. You are the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, you have the opportunity to preserve the character of our fine community, the quiet enjoyment and property values of nearby properties. None of us wants to see Route 2A in Lunenburg become the commercial equivalent of Route 2A in Ayer, Littleton, and Atton. I thank you very much.
Thank you. She told me she didn't think she could handle that.
I'm sorry?
On the phone, when I asked her to speak, she said she didn't think she could quite handle that. She did very well.
Yes, and I realize I should have spoken first, because that's a hard act to follow. My name is Donald Gurney, I live at 37 Riley Road in the town of Lunenburg. I appreciate having the opportunity, having had the opportunity to speak at the public hearing held on September 10, and to submit a written copy of my earlier remarks to the board for inclusion in the minutes of the public hear, that public hearing. First, and I think this was a comment that came from Mr. Doherty, I would like to comment on the characterization of Stone Farm Estates as a retirement community. I would like to point out that Stone Farm Estates is more accurately described as a 55 and older community, rather than as a retirement community. At present, 16 of the 47, or more than one-third, of the condominiums at Stone Farm are occupied by one or more residents who are not retired, but rather are working full-time, myself and my wife Linda being included among those in the workforce and not retired. Second, I would like to respond to one of the questions, I think it was Mr. Doherty again, raised at the September 10, 2014, public hearing, to wit, whether the residents of Stone Farm were advised of the possible commercial use of the former Riley Package Store site at the time they purchased their condominiums. In response to that question, my wife Linda and I purchased a condominium at Stone Farm in 2008 from J C J LLC, the original developer of Stone Farm Estates. We were not advised of the possible commercial use of the former Riley Package Store site at the time we made our purchase. However, had we been so advised, I think we would have contemplated that the commercial use would have been another package store or similar retail business allowed in a commercial zone without a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, rather than a 24/7 gasoline station with 10 gasoline pumps, a convenience store with a drive-through window and a car wash, which are clearly inappropriate for our residential neighborhood. Third, in the interest of saving time, I would ask you to take into account in your deliberations the considerations more fully addressed in the memorandum in opposition submitted to you by Fletcher Tilton, PC, on behalf of Stone Farm LLC and Stone Farm Estates Community Trust, and in the correspondence submitted to you by Elaine Morose of 64 Chestnut Street, by Carol and John McShane of 39 Riley Road, by my wife Linda Marble Gurney, and by others. In closing, once again, I urge you to deny the special permit requested by Mr. Archer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, at the last meeting, the chair cut off public discussion, but in the end opened the door for something new. I stated that we could not and would not entertain old business, so at this point in time, so we did open the door, and we did do some addition, as you see here. The chair senses that all of the items, I think every single one that could possibly be put out has been put out, and unless someone has something unique to say, hold on, I haven't said it yet. Unique to say that hasn't been said, and a lot has been said and written on the subject matter. The chair then would propose to cut off public discussion and turn it over to the attorneys for the applicant and those that are in opposition, so that's where the chair stands. And I see one hand going up, there's two hands going up, I suspect they can add something new. So with that, I'll continue the public discussion to hear those, but please be uniquely different than from what you heard. Your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Paulette Beardmore, I live at 282 Pleasant Street in Lunenburg. And again, I will not repeat what everyone has said, I realize it's been said several times. I realize the proponent says he is a town team player, but as a community, we already have several team players who play quite well together. I doubt a population hovering around 10,000 needs four gas stations along with three coffee shops in less than one-mile radius. I'm having a serious issue to bring to this table. In the past 20 years, the ZBA and Planning Board have, in my and many others' opinions, made some serious mistakes.
May I interrupt you?
Excuse me?
May I interrupt you?
Sure.
So I don't miss the point. Could you restate your, the mistakes that you say that the Planning Board and the ZBA have done?
I'm going to.
Pardon?
I'm going to.
Oh, I thought you had, I thought you had stated.
No, I'm not here to insult you.
I don't want to miss, no, no.
I'm just going back in history.
No problem, I just want to understand.
Thank you. We have the infamous Wal-Mart Mountain. Has it offered a convenience, somewhat? But as I read the local town publication Weekly, I find that some weeks, up to 80 percent of the police calls are to that address. Traffic violations, stealing, even domestic abuse in the parking lots, and an enormous number of accidents at the intersection. So it's a convenience that has brought us a huge cost for extra police. The Whalen project size was allowed at the height of the recession. Consequently, they now cannot be sold, because a bank will not allow a loan to a development that has such a high percentage of rentals. We consequently do not tax on the hundreds of individual condos, rather each individual building, bringing in less revenue, another big mistake. Then there are the infamous solar farms. Yes, we, the neighbors, myself being one of them, were able to reduce the size, but it continues to remain offensive in a residential neighborhood. The most offensive outcome to me and my neighbors that resulted from this project is that the town never negotiated the, any benefit from these projects. In the Sentinel of the second or third week of September, I'm sorry, I recycle, so I lost it, a large photo on the front page showed 10 business owners from Fitchburg in Lamonster, along with the mayors of Fitchburg and Lamonster, standing in my neighborhood in my solar farm, gleaming because they, the business owners, were to reap $1 million over 20 years in saved electricity. That money should have been negotiated for us and these buildings. That would benefit our tax bills, heat our schools. Please, ZBA, let's not make another mistake.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Go ahead, you're on.
I was just going to comment that the project you just mentioned, the ZBA did not have anything to do with any of those projects. They did not rule on those projects.
Right. It's not in our domain.
I mentioned the Planning Board also, where if you pass it, it's going to go to them. But in my humble opinion, and those are my neighbors, those were drastic mistakes, and it was going to be 10 times bigger. We ended up having a lawyer and an environmentalist to help us fight our cause, just as these people here fight their cause.
Okay. We just want to be sure that the, we didn't get tainted with the, that thought project.
Mr. Bowen, who would taint you?
You'd be surprised. You better be good.
I'll be quick, anyway.
That's even better, no, okay.
Thank you, Chairman Bowen. Paulette actually mentioned one of the issues I was going to talk about, so I'm not going to discuss the fact we have too many gas stations already, and maybe jeopardizing the other businesses in town that are already there, but I, I'm sorry, Elaine Morose, 64 Chestnut Street. Elaine Morose, 64 Chestnut Street. But what I do want to say is that I do feel bad that the board has been put in this rather awkward, difficult position, because I think the town failed to recognize a real inconsistency in the zoning. If you just step back and look at the fact that that is the only parcel in that entire strip of land that's zoned commercially, I think if we were to take a look at the zoning map today and readdress that whole situation, we wouldn't have ever, we wouldn't have ever selected one single spot to be somewhere in that property.
Grandfathering is a wonderful thing, or a bad thing.
Yeah, and if it was, yeah, if it were indeed grandfathered, but since it's been open, it's been vacant for a long time, and I'm not exactly, you know more than I about what that grandfathering suggests and what you can do.
Thank God my lot that I live on his grandfather.
So I do, I do feel as though you're, I do recognize that the family would love to be able to sell that to a, on the commercial use, but I think that the town would be, and be put at a permanent disadvantage because of the way that it would detract from the character of the town, and that it's one thing that the town, if they had the opportunity to vote, I'm sure would not vote for that, and I just would ask the Zoning Board to do what you can to discourage that use.
That's fair enough, and that's new business, thank you. We got, go ahead, we got another hand?
I just have a quick observation.
Come on.
You have to go in front of the mic and state your name and address.
Name and address.
My name's Susan West, I live at 38 Riley Road with my mom. I am not retired, and each morning I depart Riley Road, I take a right, and I'm very careful when I leave that road, driveway.
Out of left.
Because I turn right out of Riley Road onto Mass Ave, every morning at rush hour.
Excuse me, I'm listening.
She's part of Stone Farm.
I live in Stone Farm Estates.
You're saying when you exit Stone Farm?
Yes.
I exit Stone Farm Estates and turn right onto Mass Ave about 8:30 every morning, so rush hour.
And you have trouble.
I don't have trouble, I'm very careful, and I wait until there's no cars coming, but because of the curb, as I take that right, almost every day when I look in my rearview mirror, there's a car, right, right behind me.
Could I?
They come quickly out. Now what we're proposing is to add a second driveway immediately on my right, so as people turn right out of Stone Farm Estates, you've now got traffic coming up quickly behind you, and at you.
Could I?
Just going to add, it's just an observation of the traffic.
Yeah, but I want to make an observation on that observation. I spent a lot of time at Stone Farm, which I never did before, I live down on Lake Shirley, I never get up here, but I have made multiple trips here because of this, the case that's in front of us. And I noticed, because I drove down to Stone Farm to see where the apartments, I mean the housing is, and I came back out, and coming back out, I had difficulty, because if I wanted to take a left or a right, there's, you have beautiful walls, there are two monuments with stone walls on them, and I observed, I had to observe, that the one on the left, coming from west to east, obstructs my vision of the cars that are coming. I can only see two cars that are right upon me, and the balance of the cars, there could be five or six, if you took that stone out and moved it back, I would have better line of sight. So I felt bad, because I had great difficulty in exiting Stone Farm. So I think it would be a good idea if you could move it back a little bit to get better line of sight, because I didn't appreciate your problem, because I had experienced it with you.
I, we have no argument, we do not, the neighborhood itself is presently owned by the contractor and managed by the contractor. Certainly, when they sell the last unit and we as a neighborhood take it over, we can consider it. Right now, all of that is done by the contractor. But that doesn't take, even if we move the wall, the curve remains.
No, but I could see the cars coming. I just, my comment, but I had to make it.
Oh, no, no argument.
Because it was real to the issue that's before us.
It is.
And you bring it up, and therefore I wouldn't have brought it up, but you did.
You brought it up last time, I heard.
Okay.
I recall. Thank you.
Okay. The, I would think, I would think at this time it's appropriate for the chair to cut off public discussion with the, pardon? I didn't see you over there.
No, no, I'm sorry.
You coming?
Yes, sir.
We'll give you, as long as it's new business, we give you all the time you need.
Paula, appreciate the board, and I'm glad I'm here. I'm Alan Luoma, married Tomasz O'Reilly for 43 years, so I think you can really call me O'Reilly. But I just want to make a few statements. Mike Savinjo, I think, is an asset to your town, I've worked with him over the years in an effort to sell the property. And the laws are the laws, so the 24 months went by, we couldn't have anybody live in the property and run a business there, so we live by the law. And now it's commercial, the property's commercial, and we should go by the law of what that commercial property is, and it's what it's available for. You know, when you talk about traffic studies, this gentleman Gary has spent thousands of dollars to get a professional study done, and I appreciate the people going there with a clicker and a pen, but this is professional. The other thing about the sidewalks, I'm kind of confused, because my wife went to high school here, and she walked up that road every day for many years with no sidewalk to get to the high school, so. Commercial, I'm a little bit confused, because Linda Marble was in the store with my father-in-law when we asked her to list the property as commercial, so I don't know where the mix-up is regarding that not being available for commercial. I think you'll be pleased when you see the presentation they have today of what they've done with the plans, and again, you know, you take your life in the danger coming out of your post office here, and if you go and sit in that yard, you've got a lot more visibility. And as far as the young lady who has problems getting out of there, you are right, the stone wall does obstruct your view, but all of that growth there with those trees can be dealt with by the town. You have a 35-foot permission by the town to take those down. So I know they've trimmed it since I've been up here last, so, but anyway, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes, but I think you'll be pleased with the presentation you're going to see. And again, we want to go by the law, we've had to do that with Mike Savinjo, who knows this inside and out, the man's incredible, he's got a real asset, so I take that into consideration of what we're trying to do, and with their presentation, I think you'll be very pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, we're not, we're not in order in my own agenda, and there was one piece of business that I said that we would do, which we didn't. The reason we continued this meeting to this, among other reasons, was to get the traffic study report. Is the person, is the applicant ready to come forward and talk about the traffic study?
Hello?
Let me just jump in real quick. Excuse me, members of the board, there was one item, oh, I'm sorry, Robert Cirillo for Mr. Archer.
That's much better.
And there was one item that the traffic study was based on, which I think it was an amendment to this plan. I believe the board had seen the amendments, but Mr. Archer had revised his plan, in part based on some of the commentary, at the last meeting. He submitted a, in his revised plan, he has reduced the number of pumps by one pump, and the traffic study that's being submitted is based on that revision. In addition, he would now withdraw his application for the car wash. I don't know if the board was aware of the revised submissions.
Wait, what is it regarding the car wash?
He was removing that from his application, he does not want to go forward with the car wash.
Does not want to go forward with what, with the car wash?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and a final addition, and I believe the engineer is more prepared to speak to this than I am, was that he reduced the size of the building by, I believe it was 500 feet, 500 square feet or so, and that had to do with some of the drive-through aspects that were raised by this board. And so the traffic study is based on this revised plan, which was a smaller building, one less pump, and without a car wash, and so that's what the traffic engineer would like to propose.
Do you have a set of plans now for us to look at?
I believe that set was submitted, the board had asked that plans be submitted prior to, at least seven days prior to, it was submitted, I believe electronically. The engineer does have additional copies to submit today if the board needs additional copies, but, I mean, that, those changes, we would like to make.
Yeah, we haven't, it would appear to me, if I were to poll the board, we haven't had much chance to have looked at the changes in the proposal.
Well, could I suggest that the engineer come up?
Could be a surprise to members of this board, I would suggest.
And I guess, Mr. Chair, all I can, all I can suggest is I do have the engineer here today to further explain the changes, if that's appropriate. I know that these plans were submitted timely, as the board had requested.
When did we receive that, Lisa?
I did receive them a week ago, I didn't know it reflected a new.
You didn't know the dynamics of the change?
I just thought it was simply the traffic report.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I thought it was a duplicate of what I had here, so it's a radical, it's a different change, significant change.
They, and they would, I, and I guess for the purpose of going forward tonight, they would be considered reductions from the original plan, so, I mean, to the extent of not continuing it further, as far as the use of the property is concerned, we're still talking. it further, as far as the use of the property is concerned, we're still talking about the same use essentially as a gas station, it's just that the plan submitted addresses some of the traffic concerns, which we did not address at the original, at the first meeting, and a reduction in the amount of pumps, which also had, will be addressed in the traffic study as to the entrance and exit ways. I think that they were done in part to lessen the impact and also in consideration of the board members' questions about the drive-through and gas and other services being...
The car wash, the car wash sticks out like a sore thumb, leached into one member of the board, because of the spring and fall, when people wash their cars, the water tends to like to freeze over a little bit, and we get the site in, that I've visited myself and have two independent reports that say it's treacherous, to say the least, unless you put the car wash way back and so it didn't interfere potentially with the road.
Yes, sir. And so we've removed that?
Yeah, that would be one of my thought processes if we, as we proceeded.
Yes, sir.
So at least, uh, one of my objections in my mind, only mine, I don't speak for the board, would be that area, but so that is no longer on the table.
That's correct.
So you're saying, to summarize, as the car wash is eliminated...
Yes, sir.
If the car wash was ever to be reintroduced in the future, that would be an independent application, if that were ever to be the case, and you had the area to put it successfully and safely.
That would be my interpretation as well.
That would be my thought process. But, uh, so we're saying that the size of the, of the site is going to be reduced, the size of the gas station on the site is going to be reduced by how many square feet?
The building was to be reduced by...
Is it 500 squares feet?
500 square feet.
And the elimination of...
One of the pumps.
One, say one pump, is that two, 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 two pumps?
Yes, well, one on each side, but one of the islands, yes.
Is that, is that represent four or two?
No, it's two in this site.
Okay, so it's reduced...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything further that we should know about for the purposes of this meeting?
I...
Please come up.
The engineer has additions. Thank you.
Are we going to do the traffic study first, or are we going to polish up what we've just discussing here?
I want to go into the plan that was submitted last week, the revisions, and then the traffic study will...
See, the problem that you have is, if you say everything's in a timely manner, but when you get a zoning board of appeals, and I'm sure that you occasionally drop in to visit with them, the, uh, the, we don't get paid much, and we, uh, we don't get together, and it's difficult to bring the data together.
But I can go over this...
So important data like this, should make sure that we're ready for the next meeting. We were broadsided, we apologize for that, but the timeliness wasn't just enough for us, it would appear. Thank you. Go ahead.
Should I...
You're on.
Okay, so, um, as part of the submittal last week, we submitted the traffic study and a revised plan, and I have color handouts to give to the board, there's only six, there's seven of you. One is the plan that was presented last month, and then the other one, just give one, one each.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, wait a minute. No, no, there's one each. Are they identical?
No. They're two separate plans, one was, what was presented last?
Oh, this is the original, and this is the right...
What's this, another one?
No, one's the original, one's the new one. This is original.
Yeah. Are the attorneys, the attorneys for the, for the opposition, are they apprised of this? Do they have copies?
Uh, yes, I have a copy.
Pardon?
I have a copy.
Oh, you're in better shape, you want to come up and take over the seat here? Thank you, I'm glad you took care of that. Thank you. Okay. They'd be prepared to talk to it when we get to that issue, go ahead.
I'll go over the revisions, it's essentially the same proposal, two driveways onto Mass Ave.
I'm more comfortable now.
So the two driveways on Mass Ave, the northerly driveway has been shifted further away from Riley Road by about 10 feet. The gas islands have been reduced from five islands to four, so from 10 fueling positions to eight fueling positions. The car wash, which was located in this area, has been removed from the, from the proposal. There was a trash enclosure in this area, which was relocated into this area right here. The convenience store was reduced in size from 4,440 square feet to 3,940 square feet. There was a concern from one of the board members about the space before the canopy, before the fuel islands, we had 35 feet previously, we increased that to 40 feet, just to give it a little bit more room in front of the canopy.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
The motivation for doing this is based on questions asked by the board and your, your evaluation of what was said caused you to change the configuration?
Correct, and from what the abutters were saying, we, you know, reduced the scale of the project slightly.
Okay.
There it is, all right. So the convenience store was reduced, we had a loading zone along the northerly property line abutting Riley Road, we moved that to the back of the site. Previously, there was about 20 feet from our pavement to the property line, we increased that to 40 feet behind, to the right of the building and, you know, towards the rear, to provide added buffer from Riley Road, and also where these parking... Where the parking spaces are to the right of the canopy, we previously had 10 feet to the property line, we proposed 20 feet for additional buffer, that we would, you know, propose some plannings in that area. The drive-through lane, previously there was a board member that wanted to know how many vehicles it accommodated, drive-through lane accommodates 11 to 12 vehicles, we're showing 12, depending on how, you know, they, they stack up, 11 minimum, 12 max without impeding any traffic on site. We show a truck in the fueling location, there was concern that the truck, as it was fueling, would block the car wash exit and maybe the drive-through exit, so the trucker is shown on your color rendering, the fuel delivery truck, I'm sorry. There was a few other little, you know, minor changes. We, we had 21 parking spaces previously, and with, by moving this trash enclosure to where the car wash used to be, we added two additional parking spaces in that area, and as a, as a result of the changes, we're, we end up with an additional 3,000 square feet of green space on the site. So therefore, we, we made these changes after the meeting. Also, one more change, the, the proposed freestanding sign was previously proposed at 90.6 square feet, currently it's proposed at 82.9 because we, we removed the car wash component of that sign. So with that being said, the traffic study was prepared, revised based on this new plan that was submitted last week.
And was the net change based on the traffic plan?
The net change, I have, um, GPI, Greenman Peterson, the traffic consultant, is here to go over the traffic study.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks. Can I have the... Anyway. Okay, the battery's dead. So for the record, I'm Heather Montacup with Greenman Peterson, GPI, and we are the traffic engineers for the proposed project. As Hussein mentioned, there were some slight changes on the site, and when we finalized our traffic study to submit it to the town last Tuesday afternoon, late afternoon, we submitted it both electronically, hard copies, along with the updated site plan, and it was submitted, you know, in a timely fashion, as we were told to. The transmittal did say there was a site plan attached, I apologize if you, if you didn't recognize that, but, um, it's the first traffic study that was submitted to the town, and it is based on this, this plan that you see before you tonight. So, um, we did prepare a full traffic impact and access study, it's dated September 29th, it's in conformance with all state and local guidelines. In it, we looked at existing conditions for the proposed area, for the area of the site. We collected traffic volumes along Mass Ave, we collected collision data from both Mass DOT as well as the local police department, and we collected vehicle speeds along Mass Avenue. To look at future conditions consistent with state guidelines, we went out seven years to 2021, so when we, when I talk about analysis and things that we did, we're looking at seven years down the road. To grow those numbers, we looked at historical growth in the area, based on those numbers, growth, traffic growth in the area has been decreasing about, about, by about 0.07 percent, so it's been pretty much the same over the last 13 years. To be conservative, we used a 1% compounded annual growth rate to grow our numbers from 2014 up to 2021. As I mentioned, we did vehicle speed studies out there using automatic traffic recorders, those are tubes that are in the road, they were out there in May of 2014 to collect this data. With that, we gathered average speeds and 85th percentile speeds, that's information that you need to calculate site distances, it's based on speeds of vehicles approaching the driveways. Based on that information, the gas station, convenience store driveways, the two that are proposed to the site before you, exceed the desirable requirements set forth by Ashtoe. That assumes that there has been clearing out there recently, if you've gone out there, there's some, been some trimming back of area, I don't know who did it, it's along Stone Farm and our site, but it also assumes a bit of clearing in between Riley Road and our west-site driveway, that will, that will need to be cleared as part of the site. To estimate traffic to be generated by the proposed project, we looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers, IT Trip Generation Manual and their handbook. Using three different land use codes, gas station service station with convenience market, coffee donut shop with the drive-through window, and fast food restaurant without drive-through window to account for the gas station convenience store component, the Dunkin' Donuts, I believe, and the possible deli, that's what those uses were made up of, we generate traffic for the site. Because this site is going to take trips off the roadway, people that are on their way to work, on their way home from work, will stop in at this site. Based on information provided in the ITE handbook, 49% or more during peak hours will be pass-by traffic, meaning on their way to work, on the way home. However, because we are on Mass Avenue, which is a state highway, we are restricted to a 25% pass-by rate. So gas stations, Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, they're everywhere, you know, you don't go out of your way to go to a Dunkin' Donuts, it's, it's on your way to somewhere. But even using these, this conservative 25% pass-by that we're restricted to, the new trips to the area as a result of the project, when we analyze stuff, we look at the peak hours for this project, we looked at AM peak hour, PM peak hour, and Saturday midday peak hour. The AM is anywhere from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, PM anywhere from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and Saturday is from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Based on the peak hour between those peak periods, the AM peak hour is expected to generate 98 new trips in an hour, the PM peak hour is expected to generate 93 new trips in a peak hour, and the Saturday midday peak hour is expected to generate 56 new trips in the peak hour. Once you put this traffic on the roadways, uh, new traffic to the area that's outside of our site driveways is expected to be during all peak hours, anywhere between 26 and 54 additional vehicles to, to the roadway in either direction, because they don't all go right and they don't all go left. So once we distribute them onto the roadway, traffic increases leading beyond our driveways are expected to, or new trips beyond our driveways are expected to be between 26 and 54 vehicle trips per hour. That equates to, on average, about one additional vehicle every two minutes. That, again, one to two minutes, that assumes the 25% pass-by. Just to address something that was stated in one of the letters, that's new trips to the area. The driveways are still going to see all those turning movements, and based on the calculations of what the site is going to generate, the site driveways will see, and I'm just looking at the numbers, anywhere between one to three vehicles per minute. So I know they say we do some fandangled traffic stuff, but, um, you know, I look at peak hours, during the peak hours, I, I don't think I ever said anything differently, it's one to three cars per minute at the site driveways as you go either way, east or west on the roadway, you know, you'll see less. So then what we do is we take all these traffic numbers and we run analysis on it, so based on the, the traffic on Route 2A Mass Ave and traffic leaving the driveway, we look at Route 2A, left turns into the site are the critical movement, because right turns don't really delay anyone, it kind of slows down, but left turns you need to stop and, and look for approaching vehicles. Based on those left turns, we're expecting nine seconds or less, or less than nine seconds of delay on those left turn movements, which means probably a queue of zero to one vehicles, and on the site driveways, delays of 20 seconds with a queue of, of one vehicle at each driveway.
Did you spread me out on that timing, that nine seconds?
The nine seconds is the delay of a vehicle turning left into the site, so traveling Mass Ave westbound, turning left into the site, that's, that's based on gaps in the traffic and, and what have you, that's how long, so you're not going to have five cars queued up to turn left into the site at each driveway, that's what the analysis is telling you. You'll probably have one car at certain times turning left in, because there's adequate gaps in the traffic to get cars into the site. That's, that's essentially what that means.
So, I'm sorry, during peak hours?
During peak hours.
So how many cars per minute, did you, did you study, start the show?
I was just saying, to try to talk to, I didn't want to make light of anything that I did or didn't say. At the driveways, if you take all the trips, so the total trips in and out of the site, so I always talk about new trips to the area, because...
I'm sorry.
So I'm trying to answer your question.
I know, but you're not, because you're, you're answering it based on something else. I'm asking you, what you, what you saw today, how many cars per minute are going by that site in each direction, east and west during peak hours, today?
During peak hours.
Per minute?
So I have daily and peak hour numbers, oh, I, I don't know per minute.
All right, so peak hour numbers, what do you have?
So your peak hour, 715 vehicles total in both directions during the AM peak hour, pass by that site.
And those, and those peak hours are?
That weekday AM is from 7:00 to 8:00 AM.
Seven to eight, so you're saying in one hour you had 715...
15 vehicles pass that site, existing today in 2014.
Today, right.
Yep.
So that's 60.
Weekday PM peak hour, 869 vehicles pass by that site in one hour, the PM peak hour, 4:45 to 5:45 PM.
All right.
Okay.
Now, is that 750, is, uh...
There's...
Is that a, in morning, 75% one direction and...
Yes, um, if you need me to break that down further, if you just care about AM and PM, do you want me to give you the Saturday number?
No, I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the highest number that you got.
Okay, so the highest number that we have is weekday PM, and that's 869 vehicles pass the site. Of that, 53% of them go westbound, so it's about a 50/50 split.
So 53% have the potential to make a left turn?
Correct, just, well, some of it, yes. I mean, not 100% of the traffic that goes by the site is going to enter the site, it's...
All right, so right now, so right now, that's, I'm sorry, just give me a minute.
12 cars per minute.
How much?
12, 14 cars per minute.
I thought it was even higher than that.
12 in the 750 and 14.5 in the 69.
Excuse me, you've got a problem. If you're going to talk, you have to come here.
That's fine, you can, no, we're more than happy to take it, because I'm sitting here trying to do the numbers myself, too.
She's got to calculate.
She's got to calculate, I don't, so...
I've got a question, I currently drive past that station to go, that area, to go to Fitchburg to get my gas, so now if this gets built and the prices are competitive, and I stop in there instead of passing by to go to Fitchburg, is that considered a new trip, an existing trip? How does that work in this count?
Um, well, I, I take these numbers that were counted on the roadway, 715, and we assume that a portion of those vehicles will enter the site based on ITE. Well, I take these numbers that were counted on the roadway, 715, and we assume that a portion of those vehicles will enter the site based on IT.
But I wouldn't be considered?
Well, actually, I'm assuming 25% of the site traffic.
Right.
So I'm assuming 25% of the total trips to the site will come from trips that are already on that roadway. So if you're passing by that roadway during the AM peak hour, all ready to go to work, go get gas, you could, you would, I'm saying that 25% of the total site traffic could come into our site. And I think it would be even more because these uses are generally tend to be higher. Like I said, the IT data says upwards of 49% is pass by, but we're restricted to the 25%. So when I talk about these new trips to the areas and things like that, it's based on a conservative pass-by rate. Assuming more new cars to the area than what's on the roadway.
But would my be a new car in my, in my example, since I would pass by there anyhow to get gas in a different location?
You would.
Would I be considered a new one by stopping in there to get gas instead of going by?
If you're on your way to somewhere because you're going in that direction to work?
No, today he's on his way.
Today's on his way.
But now he's going to stop.
And now you could be a pass-by trip.
I'm going to stop now.
Yep, exactly.
So would that be a new or an existing trip?
It would be a pass-by trip. There's no existing trips to the site today, it's vacant.
No, no, there's trips past that site today, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, if you pass by the site today and now stop in and continue on your way, you would be a pass-by trip.
Okay. And to make the left turn, you judged that you needed, you had nine seconds, you're saying?
No, I'm saying that the analysis says, based on the traffic out there today, based on the left turns coming out, the opposing traffic in the eastbound direction, that vehicles will wait approximately nine seconds. The analysis says less than nine seconds to get into the site.
Okay, so it's based on there's a car every four seconds?
Just based on, yeah, just based on the opposing traffic, exactly.
And the traffic behind those cars?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that the queue is only about, is one vehicle or less. So you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have all these cars queued up in back of you trying to wait for a vehicle to get in.
Well, what hap, I mean, you have cars that are, basically, your study said that you have a car every four seconds passing by today. Today, you have a car every four seconds passing by. So if I have to stop and I'm waiting nine seconds, I have the potential for at least three, if not more, cars to be stacked up behind me. Is that correct?
That's just, yes.
Because you can't get by that person who's waiting to make a left, you can't get by them.
Correct. But you're just using these average numbers, there's peak hour factors that go into it.
I'm using the peak numbers you just gave me.
Yes.
So what else am I supposed to use except the peak numbers you just gave me?
But the analysis takes into account peak hour factors and arrival patterns of the cars and things like that. You're just using the average, just like I did. When I said on average, the cars are going to, the new trips to the area will be 26 to 54 vehicles, I'm just taking the total number and dividing it by 60. Could you have more in one minute and none in the next minute? Absolutely. So you're assuming that, you know, every car is going to come evenly at four seconds.
So, which I'm trying to make it. So if every car is now less than four seconds, because I have folks not keeping their two-second rule and things like that, it's going to be even worse. I could have eight, 10, 12 cars stacked up waiting to make, because of that left-hand turn. Is that's what you're telling me?
Well, yeah, the analysis shows that it will be about one car waiting to get in.
Waiting to get in, but it's the cars behind them that I'm concerned.
It takes into account that, though. I don't think you'll have, I don't think you'll have five cars backed up there while you're, there is, there is not enough opposing traffic to delay eight cars in the queue to get, you know, to have eight cars waiting on Mass Ave to turn left into the site.
Is there, is there any correlation between the statistics that you're giving now and the real time by this expert? That from the line of sight, the clearance when I'm coming, east or west on that road, at 40 miles an hour, which is the speed limit?
Forty miles, they're driving slower than that, though. I know people might not believe it, but that's what the ATR say. The 85th percentile speed on the roadway adjacent to the site is 38 miles per hour.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight miles per hour is what the 85th percent.
Oh, we won't quibble over two miles.
Yeah, no, exactly. But just so that you know, our site distances were based on the 40 miles per hour because it was higher.
The, from the line of sight?
Yep.
In either directions, measured by me, is at 40 miles an hour, 10 seconds to arrive at the gas station.
Okay.
How does that correlate with this left turn and this number of cars per hour? How is there a correlation between that? I'm looking at line of sight because one of the arguments would be that there's not enough line of sight for the cars coming to this site, and it's a problem.
Well, there is enough. Our driveways are a little bit further.
And I personally don't have a problem with traveling at 40 miles an hour. 10 seconds is a long time in my mind.
Oh, I think I understand.
To arrive at the site. But I'm trying to correlate that with all of the data that you're crushing in here.
And that's exactly, so when we do site distances, it's based on the speed. And just like you said, you've got, let me just get the exact numbers here in the site distance section. So when we look at site distances to make sure that they're safe, right, in order to avoid a collision at a 40 mile per hour speed, you need 305 feet to stop, okay?
Tops.
To stop, to avoid a collision.
That's three telephone poles that come in. And I noticed that in that 10 seconds, it's three telephone poles, probably 3.2 telephone poles. I'm trying to, I'm trying to take the real world and integrate it into the technical data to see which to come up.
It's tough sometimes.
So do we have a problem or we don't have a problem relative to this in terms of layman's language, which is what all these folks out here?
Correct.
Really understand, myself included.
Our driveways are a bit further from the curve to the west than Stone Farm.
Yeah.
So when you look at where the driveways are going to be placed and you measure out there, looking, when your stopping site distance is measured from driver's eye to a two-foot object in the roadway to avoid a collision, intersection site distance is taken from a car in the driveway, looking out either way, three and a half feet, driver's eye to driver's eye at three and a half feet. So we use cones, we use everything to figure out exactly what this measurement is and what you can see in the field. As I was saying, the minimum required to avoid a collision, to stop a car safely at 40 miles per hour is 305 feet. We exceed that for these driveways in both directions.
Okay.
And I believe that was even stated in a letter.
That correlates to my actual checking out of how many feet. It turns out to be 300 feet at 40 miles an hour. It takes me that amount of time. I was surprised, I thought I could stop faster than that.
Slamming the brakes. Not if you don't want your head to go through the windshield. But if I could just finish some other, there was one more piece of the traffic study that I wanted to add because it kind of plays a part in the permitting of the project. But the drive-through queue lane, we have some observations that we've done at five other Dunkin' Donuts locations. And based on that data, they were done during the AM peak period, so 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. We found out that the average queue is six vehicles and the max queue was 10 vehicles. That can all be accommodated within the drive-through lane without disrupting onsite circulation. So I thought that was important to note. Another thing is, as mentioned earlier, Mass Ave is under state jurisdiction. So we have already applied for our application for permit to access state highway. That was submitted, when we submitted to you, finalized everything, we submitted on October 1st to Mass DOT. They have received the information and they are reviewing it, so we're awaiting their comments. So as far as the driveways and all that stuff, it will be looked at by Mass DOT as well because we can't get an access permit and put our driveways in without that.
You've been taking more notes than me. What's your conclusion?
Well, I had a couple of questions. You mentioned that there was three things that you used to judge the new vehicles?
Yes.
You mentioned the gas station. How many new vehicles is based on a gas station?
Okay.
Because I can't go through the traffic study and find the specific, if you can. You know where it is.
I do. Okay, so it's the big 11 by 17 page. So in our developing the trips for the site, we use all the standards in IT, as I said. And we assume that you can have multi-use credit trips, meaning that if someone gets gas, they could also get a coffee. And using all standards in IT, we developed how many trips will come into the site based on that. So I can give you the total trips of everything or new trips to the area. I don't, I don't know what you want to see. You want total trips? You want to see total?
I'd like to know that the, that based, that you, that your, the Massachusetts says that, or whatever the group is, says that a gas station will provide, you're assuming how many trips?
This trip, okay. The gas station during the AM peak hour is expected to generate 63 trips during the AM peak hour.
Right.
98 during the weekday PM peak hour and 31 on a Saturday midday.
Okay, so then the drive-through?
The donut shop, 48 during the AM.
Yeah.
18 during the PM and 28 on a Saturday.
Okay, and then the deli?
Nineteen trips on an AM peak hour, nine trips during the PM peak hour, and 15 on a Saturday midday peak hour. Those are total trips.
Understand.
That will come in and out of the driveways when you add them all.
During that peak, during those peak hour?
Correct, during the peak hour. The peak hour of the peak period of traffic.
So basically, if I do a quickie here, I'm like 111?
It's 130 during the AM total, 125 during the PM total, and 74 during the Saturday midday total. And those are shown on the Build Network, which is Figure 3, I believe, I'm sorry, Figure 4, 2021 Build Networks, Figure 4 in the study. And it shows all of those trips, total external trips entering and exiting the site.
What's your personal conclusion from the data that you have?
From the what that I have?
What is your conclusion from the data that we have, you have generated?
Uh, my?
Is it safe?
Yes, it meets all industry standards and delays our, its level of service even better.
The numbers, you know, they could dance in your head and you don't know.
Another thing, too, is even though you can see all the driveways, I know the woman spoke about leaving their driveway. And, I mean, you don't just jump out into traffic, you need to make sure that you have a gap in traffic to exit the site safely. So I understand there's many areas that have many curb cuts, but it's not like you can't, when you're leaving Stone Farm or when you're leaving the site driveway, you'll be able to see vehicles leaving Stone Farm as well. There's no obstruction in the way. They're, everyone will be visible. So I just want to make that statement. It's nothing's obstructed.
Okay, by any chance, do you actually have the data for what the sight lines are from Stone Farm?
I have no idea, I didn't do those.
310 feet.
310?
Yeah, that's based on my.
Oh, that's right.
From the utility poles.
Three and a quarter telephone poles.
And that's to the left?
That's looking, looking.
Left to each, each and west, they come up very close together.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Yep.
Going through it, so these trips you are talking about, under the trip generation, it says that it's estimated that in excess of 20% of traffic generated is the multi-use development, could be internal trips.
Correct.
And then you say you used a 37% internal capture rate.
That's what it ended up calculating.
Explain all of that, please, and how that calculates into the traffic?
Yes. So what happens is, each use, as we went through, generates a certain amount of traffic based on IT, right? You have three uses on the site. The gas station convenience store is considered one use because that's how we count traffic for those types of sites. The deli is considered another site, and the donut shop is considered another site, assuming it's retail to retail. So when you look at IT, 20% of the traffic can go back and forth to two of the uses, back and forth to two of the uses, and back and forth to two of the uses. So gas station convenience store to donut shop, gas station convenience store to deli, deli to gas station convenience store, deli to donut shop, donut shop to gas station convenience store, and donut shop to deli. So when you put all the numbers in, you get an internal capture rate, and those are the numbers that are, that I believe that you were reading off the build traffic. Let's see here.
He's writing the big A.
It's under the trip generation.
I'm sorry, it's right before site distance, yeah. It says right there that the, for the deli, oh, that's me. The internal capture rate would be 60, no, those are pass-by rates, didn't, oh, the multi-uses first, right? Yeah, so it was 26% internal capture rate during the AM peak hour, 18% during the PM peak hour, and 49% during the Saturday midday peak hour. Meaning that someone who goes and gets gas could go and get a coffee, and that wouldn't be two trips to the site, it would be one trip to the site that goes to two of the uses.
Okay, thank you. You have a final comment to make us feel warm and fuzzy?
Well, just based on, based on the site distances that we did out there, the driveways will be safe. Based on the speeds out there, again, the speeds are lower than the posted speed limit, and we based everything on the posted speed limit of 40 miles per hour. That's not to say that everyone's traveling 38 miles per hour, it's the 85th percentile speed. So that speed of which, 15, I'm sorry, I just need a minute. Let me just get to the speeds here and make sure I've got this correct. So that's the speed at or below which 85% of all observed vehicles are traveling. So 85% of the motoring public that goes by there is traveling at 38 miles per hour or less.
I would agree with that.
So that's, and it makes sense because you are approaching or leaving that horizontal curve to the west. And actually, one to the east, but it's a bit further away. So as you approach the curve and enter, they're slowing down a little bit. And besides that, the onsite circulation, the site can handle any queues on the site that would potentially be waiting to exit out of Mass Ave. So I don't, I don't see an issue with the driveways or anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Fletcher in Tilton, I guess, and that's Andrea?
Amanda.
Is that correct?
Amanda.
Amanda.
Amanda, excuse me, Amanda. I didn't put my glasses on, I'll put them on and I won't make that mistake again.
Well, I put mine on, so.
The, did you embed a traffic study report in your thought process?
I did.
Wow, go ahead, you're at your floor.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Amanda Rish and I represent Stone Farm LLC and Stone Farm Estates Condominium Trust. As this board may be aware, Stone Farm Estates has approximately 100 residents and abuts the proposed site for the project. This board has received our memorandum in opposition of a special permit. Rather than reiterate our argument in the memorandum in opposition, I would like to focus on a couple of key points this evening. First, I'd like to point out that the site is located in a split zoning district. While a portion of the site is located in the commercial district, the vast bulk of the site is located in the limited business residential district. Under the protective bylaw of Lunenburg, a gasoline service station and a drive-through are prohibited uses in the limited business residential district. While I can appreciate the fact that the applicant has removed the car wash from its site plan and reduced the amount of pump stations.
It's good I put you on last, huh?
What was that?
It's good I put you ahead of the traffic report.
Yes, you did. While I can appreciate the fact that the applicant has removed the car wash, I would submit that part of the motivation for doing so is because the commercial zone is simply not big enough to accommodate all of the proposed uses that applicant is suggesting in a way that is consistent with the existing neighborhood. Second, I'd like to point out that under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, also known as the Zoning Enabling Act, towns are given a wide range of discretion in deciding whether to grant a special permit. In other words, there is no right to a special permit and the applicant is not entitled to one simply by submitting its application. To quote ZDOL versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Carver, neither the Zoning Enabling Act nor the Town Zoning Bylaw gives an absolute right to a special permit. The board is not compelled to grant the permit, it has discretionary power in acting. The board must act fairly and reasonably on the evidence presented to it. Further, the refusal to grant a special permit does not require detailed findings. If the board finds any permissible reason to deny the application, its decision will be sustained.
Could you back up a minute?
Yeah.
Could you just kind of repeat that last statement?
Yes. The refusal to grant a special permit does not require detailed findings. If the board finds any permissible reason to deny the application, its decision will be sustained. be sustained. Meaning that the Lunenburg Town Bylaw has identified specific criteria required for a special permit, and if the board finds that the applicant has not proved any of these criteria, they may reject the application. As has already been explained by this board in a prior hearing, the board must find that the granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. It is my personal feeling that the application fails this test on its face. A twenty-four-hour gas station will negatively affect property values of the surrounding neighborhood and detract potential buyers from purchasing homes around the gas station. To name a few of the negative consequences that have already been reiterated here tonight, the proposed development will materially and significantly increase traffic in the area as identified in the applicant's traffic study. There will be sound impacts at all hours of the day, including the middle of the night, from customers stopping for gas, gas and food product deliveries, trash and recycling pickup, and construction for the project. The applicant has not, to my knowledge, submitted a sound analysis for this project. We are also concerned about light spill from this development. The applicant's revised site plan shows a, uh, large and, in my opinion, obtrusive pylon freestanding sign that directly borders Riley Road. We feel that line of sight will be impacted for those residents that are entering and exiting Riley Road.
Excuse me a minute?
Yes.
Just so that I get better tuned in to you, which I want to do. Which page are you just turned to?
Um, these are just my notes for today.
Pardon? Say again?
These are my notes for today, I'm not.
From here?
Uh, I did read the quote that I use in my opposition.
So you extrapolated, okay, I was trying to follow, and that's now, now I understand why. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, finally, this proposal is not an appropriate location for the gasoline service station, and that the proposal greatly expands the current limited commercial use of the site. As previously mentioned, the proposed development will generate a significant material increase in traffic. The abutting residential neighborhood was developed in an expectation of a use on the site that was similar to the innocuous past use. This application vastly deviates from that use. While this facility might be appropriate in some commercial zoned area of Lunenburg, this is not the one. Thank you.
Okay. There any questions from the board at this point in time to the, to the presenter? No questions, I think we're ready to move on to the applicant.
Good evening again, members of the board, thank you for your time in considering this. I know this is a difficult.
Are you paraphrasing, or?
No, I'm, I'm winging it.
Okay, go ahead, as long as I understand.
Robert Sorillo again.
Who's the guy paying you by the hour notes?
Oh, he's, he, he's going to tune this part out.
Okay.
Um, but I understand that this is a difficult decision, I, there's been a lot of opposition to it, and I think that this is a hard decision that the board has to make, because on the one hand, you have a commercial district that's completely abutted by a retail business district, not a residential district, but a retail business district, which behind that is a residential district, seven hundred feet away is the closest house. The impact to the neighborhood.
Just a minute.
Sure.
That didn't sound quite right to me in my, uh, analysis. Hold on a minute, I just want to make sure I'm listening properly.
And I thought that we had discussed at the last meeting that it was.
I have a map here. The, uh, directly opposite where the gas station is, on the other side of the road, what did you call that for the district?
I don't know, he said seven hundred feet.
Across the street?
Yeah, in other words, on the cross, across two ways.
Isn't it retail, I, I believed it was retail business on both.
Residential.
Thank you.
It's, it's combination, it's limited retail slash residential.
Yes.
No, no.
Pardon?
Limited business.
It's limited business.
Limited, excuse me, limited business slash residential, I just want to make sure we're talking, because directly opposite that, uh, where the gas station is going is their, their two homes.
Two homes.
And they're in the, they are, are residential, limited business, just so long as we clear and understand what we're talking about.
Obviously, there's a home, no, no. Okay.
And by the way, do you agree with that?
I, I do.
Okay.
So the issue becomes, what use can this property become if it's not going to be, uh, a gas station? And again, we go back to, uh, the idea that in the commercial district, that we can have restaurants, that we can have, um, hotels, and it's not, it's not the right size for hotel, but in this situation, like, I would, I would remind the board that restaurants are, um, there was reference to Conrad's Restaurants, but there can be fast food restaurants, there can be other kinds of.
Let, let me ask you a question in that regard. If McDonald's comes around tomorrow.
Yep.
And wants to put a McDonald's there, and they want to run seven, twenty-four, seven, do they need to come in front of anybody, or is it by right? I think I know the answer.
I mean, my understand, my interpretation is that it would be by right because it's a restaurant.
And I would agree with that.
And the use.
Except, except for the drive-thru, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
The drive-thru would have to come before.
No, no.
No, not the drive-thru.
The drive-thru would have to come first.
Absolutely.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I, I think the drive-thru.
That's what I just read.
That's what the law says, in the bylaws.
Mike, could you give me clarification about, this is my.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the drive-thru would, would require a special permit.
Just trying to set the.
That's correct.
It says.
No.
Okay, well, that's what happens when you wing it.
Stay there, I don't want you to go away. I just want to comment from Mike.
I'm not.
Tell me where it says that in the book.
Right here.
The, the point is that.
What's what you want?
Careful, just be careful, rest easy.
Da, 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 there we go.
We'll give you all the time you want, nice and clear.
Retail. Oh, wait, no, it was also, it was right here.
Go ahead, Mike, yeah.
Okay. It's actually, yeah, I'm good. Here, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
I knew I saw it right here a second ago.
I saw it too.
Where was it?
But that's in, yeah.
It's in, no, I mean, whatever.
Oh, here we go. I like your interpretation better.
Excuse me, Mike, Section four, four point five point three point one A, under four point five point three, use permissible by special permit granted by the Board of Appeals. In the retail commercial district, the zoning board appeals may get authorized by special permit in the following of the additional usage, drive-in or window service accessory.
So you can stop right there, in the retail commercial district, they can allow it, it is not mandatory in the commercial district. There is nowhere in the commercial district that it says a drive-through window needs to have the special permit from the zoning board of appeals. It says that if you're in the retail commercial district, which is the center of town, the bank, that's why you had to entertain the drive-through window for the bank, but you didn't have to entertain the drive-through window for the dipping donuts. The reason being, probably a flaw in the bylaw, but we have to go by what the bylaw says, because if you go to court, it's, what does the book say? There is nothing that requires a special permit for a drive-up window in the commercial district. Therefore, a McDonald's being a restaurant would be allowed by right on a conforming lot, which this is, in the commercial district with a drive-through window without the zoning board of appeals approval.
Let me ask one other question, it's my thought that, uh, when they came and McDonald's came to open up, and they wanted seven twenty-four, oh, twenty-four, seven, I always get that wrong, uh, then they have to go to development plan review to you, to go to you to get the permit, but I didn't see any place where, uh, in that the hours are controlled by the planning board, so.
No, there was, you're correct, uh, my opinion would, I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I've looked at that many times, and there was nothing in the development site plan review that requires the planning board to entertain anything about the product that you're selling or the hours of operation. All of the criteria relative to the site plan review, which a McDonald's being a restaurant would be allowed by right, because in the commercial district, the bylaw allows any use that is allowable by right in the retail district, which a restaurant is one of them, retail sales is allowed by right, is allowed by right in the commercial district without a special permit from the zoning board.
So if McDonald's came tomorrow.
They could go in there by right.
They don't say yes at all.
They don't come to you, but they would have to go to site plan review, and they would review the conditions of the site.
But the, if I wanted a key on the twenty-four by seven.
There is nothing that restricts, unless it was restricted under possibly a special permit.
No, but where would they need it?
I'm just saying, um, no, unless it's restricted under a special permit, don't forget, McDonald's doesn't need one. They would not, they could open twenty-four, seven.
That's my point.
I mean, we've had, Planet Fitness has been open twenty-four, seven.
Yeah, that's my, that's all I want to know, I was, I'm trying to put everything in context there for.
I think your statements are very accurate.
Okay, do you have any objections?
So, so that there's no confusion, tomorrow, a McDonald's could go there by going through site plan review, have a drive-up window, no special permits required for anything.
I see an attorney raising her hand, and I would invite her down to make a comment, and we'll be back on to your schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to make a, a point of clarification, so what you're saying, Mike, is because they're before us for the special permit, we can condition the hours of operation?
I would believe that the, uh, the zoning board of appeals can entertain anything they want to make it compatible to the neighborhood, that's my opinion.
You wanted to make a comment to this point?
Yes, um, well, I'd just like to clear it for the record, and perhaps my interpretation is incorrect, so feel free to.
I could be wrong too, I'm, I'm human being.
Um, under four point, four point six point two point one, in the commercial district, any use is permitted without requiring a special permit within the retail commercial district. So then if you go to Section four point five point three point one, it says that in the retail commercial district, the zoning board of appeals may authorize by special permit a drive-in window. So it is not by right allowed in the commercial district, it is allowed if it is approved through a special permit.
I agree, I stand corrected.
Pardon?
I, I, I agree with that interpretation.
But she said retail.
No, no, if it's, because if it's in the retail, what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, and the bylaws are subject to interpretation, that's why they got attorneys.
Right.
Um, what she is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that because a special permit, no, no, wait a minute, I'm, hold on, hold on, I'm, I want to take a look at that, because you need a special permit for a drive-through window in the retail commercial district, but you don't need a special permit for, in the commercial district, and they're in the commercial district. The use is allowed, that they don't need the drive-through window approval because, because they're in the commercial district. They only approve the drive-through windows in the retail commercial district, the drive-through window is not in the retail commercial district, the drive-through window is part of a use that is just stealing a use that's allowed by right in the commercial district from the retail district. Now they're in the retail district, they don't have to go for the special permit, they're only allowed to withdraw a permitted use out of the retail commercial district. So you take the restaurant, it's not in the commercial district, but we allow a restaurant to be in the commercial district because it's allowed by right. Now you're in the commercial district with a restaurant, let's say next year you want to put a drive-through window in, you're in the commercial district, I don't even have to go there.
Well, under the retail commercial district, it does enumerate specific uses which are allowed, and you don't need to go and get a special permit, but a drive-through window, it says that you need to go and get a special permit.
If it's in the retail commercial district.
Correct, and then.
Because we're in the commercial district with this building.
Right, but in the commercial district, the only uses that are allowed by right are any uses, uh, without requiring a special permit within the retail commercial district, without requiring a special permit. So because a drive-through requires a special permit in the retail commercial district, it's not allowed by right, it's still subject to special permit. And I, and I don't know if we're confusing.
You could be right, you could be right, I'd like to take a look at that, but she could be right, the interpretation of that.
It's all fun.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm glad I had a clear understanding of the definition.
I understand.
See, you have to call on me, darn right. Thanks a lot.
That's where I lean on you.
Well, you better, for sake of argument, you better take two different views on the, uh, on the, on the drive-through window.
Why, they're both working.
They're asking for the special permit, neither case.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're asking anyway.
Okay.
And I, I think after hearing it read again, um.
By the way, get towards the mic.
Sure, after, after hearing it again, I, I guess it depends on, uh, the definition of the use, because the use would be a restaurant, uh, restaurant with drive-through, restaurant without, and so the, whether or not you would need a dri, a, a permit for a drive-through window in a commercial area where a restaurant use was allowed as a matter of right, becomes a question of would you need a, a permit for that one, uh, item?
I promise you I'd give you the mic back.
Ah, after that, I was done. In any event, my point is, the board understands my point. There are permitted uses as a matter of right on the site that would have an impact, uh, to the area regardless, any use of a site is going to have an impact, positive or negative, but as the board correctly surmised, tomorrow, there could be a permit submitted for a McDonald's, or a request to, uh, the building inspector, there wouldn't be any ZBA, there wouldn't be any, um, other regulation except planning board, and the issue there would be the issue that the only concern would be, the only real concern to be addressed would be the traffic. The traffic has been addressed, um, and so we have, we have owners of this property now who, again, have been paying the taxes at a commercial rate. They come before you, they say some of these abutters knew, um, what was going on before, they say some of the people that spoke here were aware that this was a commercial district, um, and, you know, you have an applicant who has come here, he's a resident, not of Lunenburg, but a resident of neighboring town, he's been in business for twenty years, he wants to work with the board, he wants to work with the town, um, and he is proposing a use that will, um, one, it's a use that in a commercial district, uh, you know, is allowed. Uh, I would, I would remind the board that, um, the board allows gas stations in the commercial use, the board has allowed gas stations in the past in commercial zones. Um, it's an appropriate zone, and while it's a difficult decision, um, the impact of something that would be allowed as a matter of right versus the impact that this applicant, applicant is proposing, um, is, is similar or less, because in this case, you have an applicant that you can regulate and work with. Uh, I think that it's appropriate for the board to grant the special permit and allow the applicant to proceed to the planning board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, uh, I did reread the bylaw, and for the record, my formal interpretation as the zoning officer of the town is that the attorney that was just speaking, uh, is correct, because a drive-up window requires a special permit in the retail commercial district, then it does require the special permit in the commercial district. I agree with Town Council.
So in conclusion.
You need to entertain the drive-up window under a special permit.
Only the drive-up window, but the hours of operation of twenty-four by seven is, is, they could do it, another McDonald could open up twenty-four, seven tomorrow.
We had Planet Fitness in the commercial district twenty-four.
If they wanted a drive-through, if they wanted a drive-through, then they would have to come through this board?
If McDonald's was in there by right and didn't put a drive-through in, and they came later, and they said, hey, we want to put a drive-through in.
They'd come to this board.
They'd have to come to you, and the reason why they would have to, because that restaurant use was pulled out of the retail district as a permitted right, but there's no permitted right after rereading and listening to the attorney's interpretation, and I agree with that.
I like the attorney's take ahead, yes.
I agree with that.
Savor a walk all the way down here.
So, uh, yes, they would have to go to get a special permit because only the restaurant was allowed.
The hours of operation which I was keying on.
We don't have hours of operation anywhere in the bylaw that I see, so it's to the prerogative of the board to establish that relative to the character.
No, no, but if it's, if it's a McDonald's, they don't have to come in front of us.
Nobody would have to come in front of us without a.
Right, and if they want it to be open twenty-four, seven, they'd be just like Planet Fitness, they could open twenty-four, seven. We don't have restrictions in this town. We don't have restrictions in this town on hours of operation.
But we do when it comes before a special permit, because we can condition it.
That's the prerogative of the board. That would be, is it compatible to the neighborhood?
I'm taking the two and I'm separating them, but I want to know the commonality of the two.
Right.
That's the purpose of my discussion.
But for the record, you need to entertain the special permit for the drive-up window as requested, the attorney is correct, and I follow that interpretation.
Thank you. Okay, we've had all of the talk. With that, I think that we are prepared to cut off discussions, we've heard from the attorneys, and we can bring the business to the board. Gentlemen, you've heard an awful lot, you've seen an awful lot, and this has been one of the biggest crowds that we've ever had in all my 30 years of the zoning board of appeals. So with that, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I had the pleasure of visiting Mr. Archer's facility in Littleton and taking little measurements, I hope your GM told you that somebody was by, and that brought up a few concerns for me on what he's asking for, because I look at that as kind of a model of what he's trying to do, even though that site does not have a drive-through, the site has more entrances and exits than we're proposing, but I felt that that was a site that he's proud of, so I wanted to take a look and see what was going on. So the first thing I noticed, and now with the changed plans, it actually thinks were things, the original plans with the five pumps and the proximity of the pumps to the road were much closer to the road and caused much more traffic than he has there. The main concern I have here is that the site in Littleton has two driveways on the main road, both those driveways are shown by markers as one ways. Both those driveways are 33 and 1/2 feet wide. Here you're proposing a 24-foot driveway that's two ways. I don't think that's enough room for somebody who, two cars, especially if you have cars pulling quickly off of Mass Ave, I am not comfortable with a two-way driveway on both sides of this facility. It's much too narrow, causes much too grief, and not coincides with his own facility in Littleton, and never mind the one on Lancaster Shirley Road, which is 41 feet, which is much more room for two vehicles to get in. So I'd like to think that we would want to do something about that driveway entering Mass Ave, A, make it a one-way, and B, even the size in general of the driveway. I was excited that he moved the trash away from Riley Road, I thought that was rather inappropriate that there was on Riley Road, but I'm excited about that. The big concern I have now is snow removal. Where is the storage for snow removal on this site right now? I see nothing proposed by the engineer as where we're going to have snow storage during the storm, and especially since there is a drive-through, and I wouldn't want the snow storage to affect the limited vegetation we do still have on the site. So any comments from the engineer on what are we doing about snow storage and snow storage during winter storms?
Snow storage would be stored around the perimeter of the site in the landscaped areas that are provided. Any excess snow that impacts his daily operations would have to be trucked off-site. And that's usually something we show on the plans when we proceed with the full drainage design that we had discussed before, that's required at the planning board, the lighting that's required at the planning board.
And the development plan review would have to be addressed to that issue.
Snow storage would be proposed in the landscaped areas around the perimeter of the parking lots, as with every other commercial development.
If you come back again. Sorry to draw on you, but I want the linkage, because in terms of, we don't always, in terms of what we do, end up with a development plan review, but you do in conjunction with the planning board. We've got a plan here that's modified that would eventually get to the planning board. When it got to the planning board, can they, if they couldn't handle the issue of snow and there's no proper way to do it, what can be the conclusion of the planning board? Denial of the permit of what? I have curiosity to resolve the issue.
Right, they look at the parameters of the site itself. If you look at the conditions that the planning board finds that the applicant has to meet under the site plan review, you'll see that they're all relative to the drainage on the site, the lighting is involved in that on the site, it could be snow removal, it could be the means of egress, the exiting, the facility. They have particular standards that they use under the site plan review. It could be that, you know, Littleton has a standard of so many feet for an entrance, but Lunenburg has their own conditions. If you look in the bylaw, you'll see they have their own specific conditions of, you know, you have to have, maybe you have to have an island in that. I mean, I'm not doing the planning board's, you know, decisions for them, but they do look at the site criteria. If it doesn't meet the site criteria, then the development plan review can actually be denied, and it says so in the bylaw.
This is my point, that I wanted to get to answer, to satisfy your concern, which is rightly your right concern. So, go ahead, I just wanted your comment.
Right, right.
And so they don't drag you up there on and on and on and on.
That's okay.
We just want to be able to say that under the site development plan review, there are issues that will come up, and they're always subject to the planning board revoking. In the other words, and if they do revoke, what is their recourse? Is that the courts?
The recourse to that, if I recall in the bylaw correctly, and I think I do, is that they can withdraw from the site plan review without prejudice, and they can immediately go back with a modification, they don't have to wait two years.
Okay.
So if there was something that the planning board said, look, we're denying the site plan review, we feel you don't qualify for the site plan review, then the applicant can withdraw without prejudice and come back with a modification as soon as possible.
Does he not have to come back to this board again?
You're approving the use relative to the character of the community and the criteria under the special permit, they were approving the site, they will be looking at just what was presented today, they'll be doing that same traffic study in front of the planning board, they'll be talking much more about drainage, environmental, a lot of environmental issues on the site which will be looked at, you know, by the planning board. So their site and your use, if you approve the use and they don't approve the site because, well, your entrance isn't wide enough, the applicant can withdraw without prejudice, fix the problem, go back and have a satisfactory settlement.
And if he can't, the project's dead.
If he refuses to comply, then it's denied, and then they just go to court.
Okay, I just want to put it all in proper context as to the flow to see where we're going.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I need clarification.
By the way, just one comment.
Yeah.
If in the event that we approve in the conditional area of the approval, then we would take in our remarks relative to snow and other issues, would be transferred over to the planning board for their consideration. It's not our domain, but we would highlight them.
Right.
Okay, all right, go ahead, I think, thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Clarification, does he also have to be coming to us for the relief on the size of the sign?
We're doing that now.
The sign is, Mike, you might as well get back here. Why don't you get him a chair?
I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't becoming part of the planning board.
Under the signed bylaw, I can cite the site, the section, under the signed bylaw, the planning board is responsible if an applicant goes in front of the planning board for a site plan review because it's required, then they are the ones that are responsible for allowing, or I should say approving, signs that are pylon in nature and that are in excess of 36 square feet, which is the maximum you can do in the commercial district. I can take one second and read it to you real quick.
Go ahead, might as well get it all out.
No guarantee on that.
To put things in context, when we granted the permit... Am I on there? When we granted the permit, we defined what the sign should be. In reality, that was not in the domain of the zoning board of appeals. The approval of the signs and the configuration of the signs is in the domain of the planning board. So I just wanted to let you, but we overstepped our boundaries, but we did such a good job, the planning board accepted our recommendation.
Okay, Don, I can read that.
But we could comment on signs.
Okay.
You could look at the sign relative to how it fits the character of the community in your decision.
Right.
The planning board has to approve it under the site plan review. Here's the section under the signed bylaw. 6.5.1.7, signs subject to development plan review. Prior to the granting of a permit by the building official for a sign, the planning board must approve the following signs, subject to applicable submission requirements, contents, and guidelines of section 8.4 Development Plan Review. Said determination to be made by the planning board. They have to approve, under the development plan review, all freestanding pylons except those permitted in 6.5.1.2 and 6.5.1.5, and I believe those do not apply to this condition. So they would have to approve in the site plan review the pylon sign. You could make the recommendations, you could make any decision relative to the size of the sign, relative to the character of the community and its fit, and that would have to go in front of the planning board if that is one of your concerns, but they have to approve it. In addition, they have also, they are responsible under site plan review for anything that goes to site plan review, not everything, but only that that goes to site plan review, all signs over 36 square feet. 36 square feet is the maximum allowable size of the sign in the commercial district by right. So if they go over 36 square feet, and they're 82-point-something square feet now on their sign, it's up to the planning board to approve that in the site plan review, and they also have to approve the pylon sign.
That's roughly a little bit more than a 4 by 8 piece of plywood.
That's correct, just slightly over, yeah.
And that's on the building.
Eight square feet more. The building sign would also have to be approved by the planning board if it's over 36 square feet. It doesn't say, because it's two sections they approve, pylons, period, whatever size they are, and all signs over 36 square feet, that's what it reads.
I'm reminded that the other, it was my opinion and the previous granting on Lancaster Shirley Road, that, and the signs down there are the large sign, as you could imagine and see. It was my thought, wrongly so, I guess, that it was the nature, the marketing nature of mobile, or whoever it was, that this was their stamp, this is what they do. But subsequent to that, and then we argued that, but it was successful in that place, the sign was compatible and worked.
It was compatible, yep.
But I've been reminded that there are other towns that have mobile or other, that don't have to conform to that huge sign that I thought it was an industry standard, but there could be a requirement to disallow it, to make it compatible in harmony with the neighborhood, better than what it exists now.
Than what you see today. Yeah, I agree with that, Mr. Chairman, and I have personally seen, I've seen a mobile sign in another community that basically is probably no higher than, I'm going to guess, 10 feet off the ground.
I was going to tell you that the sign at his Littleton facility is 10 foot 6.
There's one in Bolton that's a mobile station and the sign is that high, still has all the lettering that it needs, still has everything it needs, but it's not 80 square feet and 20 feet high.
22 feet, but the one, I guess, the one in the Littleton facility is 10 foot 6 by the same width.
I think that's an agreement that the applicant can make with his vendor, but that's up to him. But, yeah, there's signs, I mean, maybe the pylon doesn't...
Thank you, Mike.
Chairman, I just want to ask one thing for the building inspector. So, just to refresh my memory, why is this, I know it was spot-zoned commercial, but in today's environment, that probably wouldn't be the case.
No, that's against a lot of spot-zone. What I believe happened here was when they did the limited business district, and I think Mrs. Beardmore spoke up about this, Hair Holly might have been on the planning board, as she mentioned at the last meeting, and basically what I think happened was, back when all of that occurred, spot zoning was okay. So when the town started expanding its zoning through the years, which we change frequently almost every year in certain areas, what happened was they took that side, a portion of the left side heading east, west, and they took the opposite side, and they came from the commercial district, the retail commercial district in the center, which is where we are right now, and they labeled that limited business residential district. But everybody must have looked at docks and said, wait a minute, he's a commercial use, so let's make him commercial so he doesn't get affected by this. In hindsight, what probably should have happened was, for good planning purposes, is you make the whole thing limited business residential. He stands as a pre-existing non-conforming use, and then anything that goes there, because it's pre-existing non-conforming, comes in front of your board, even the McDonald's now, but they made it commercial, and we have to go by what it says they're allowed to do.
Wait a minute, not even the McDonald's, we just went through that.
Without a drive-through, without a special permit.
Just don't want to wipe out all that discussion.
Basically, they did the right thing back then, what they thought they were, but now we're finding out something like that needs to be corrected. If that was limited business residential, he would have been pre-existing, non-conforming, any use, any change of use, any alteration to that use would come in front of the board to make sure it was compatible with the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you, Mike.
But we're dealing with the commercial zone because that's what it is.
Okay, thank you. Where are we? Did I interrupt you or did you interrupt me?
Still questions from us.
Oh, yeah, we're at the board.
I'd like to, I'd like to...
You're prepared to answer all questions.
I'd like to ask the engineer...
Go ahead.
...a few questions that are before us. Under D, of course, we have the, you know, lighting, noise, all of that, I haven't heard anything addressed by you, what the lighting is, how you're going to keep it, there are houses directly across the street, there are abutters in the back, even though they're a ways away, in the wintertime, the leaves are gone, you also have to talk about buffer zones, what are you really putting there? Is it vegetation, is it trees, is it fences? I'd like you to address all of those zoning issues that pertain to the questions that we have to satisfy.
Again, my belief is that all of that, the lighting, the landscaping that's proposed, again, drainage is handled during the development plan review process.
It may be handled under development, but we have to find in our findings that it's not going to affect the material adverse effect upon the neighbors and the buildings around it. The lighting certainly could do that.
Right.
The lighting could certainly do that under will-not-produce-noise-vibration-smoke-dust-odor heat or glare observable at lot lines. So I think that you have to address them here as well, not just to the planning board.
The lighting, the lighting design would come, you know, from a lighting manufacturer. We would limit the spillover over the property line, so any lighting that's proposed on site, they do a lighting plan with foot candles that shows the lighting on the ground level. So that would have to be limited, so we don't extend beyond our property lines. So that's done with flat lenses, you might see some sites have like a bulb hanging down from their light pole, that would shine light everywhere, the flat lens just shines light downward. So a lot of that would be downward. The planning board, again, would review, you know, we'd have to look at what the height requirements are for the lighting, I don't think that's in the zoning board's criteria. Typically, a planning board would have, you know, you're allowed a certain height of a light pole, a certain type of lights, so, again, a lot of that will be addressed, but for the board, the lighting will not spill over beyond the property lines.
But it won't, it'll continue to move to the retina of the eye of someone across the street, is that true?
Across the street.
Yeah, you know, if you light up the building...
They're going to see light.
They're going to see light.
But there will not be any light shining directly beyond...
But it could be objectionable at 2:00 in the morning.
Signage will have lighting, but again, when we do a lighting plan, there's no spillover over the property line, so if you hold a flashlight here and this is your property line, that light level...
What does that do to the person that's sitting 100 feet away in their house, in their living room?
At night?
They're going to see it. They're gonna see it, no? You, you don't, you, it doesn't go away.
Again, I'm not sure if they would see it, but...
If they had their window open?
I see the streetlights if I look straight up at it.
Well, true.
If they're looking straight, you know, they're going to see some light. Currently, there's no, nothing there.
You don't think that should be disturbing to them?
Again, the lighting plan would be designed to conform with the requirements. You can't, you can't, you know, my house is on a main street. I look outside, the light, the streetlight is facing my, you know, house. There might be streetlights out here that are...
If it's dark today and gonna be bright tomorrow forever, 24 hours a day, is that a problem?
That's, that's a difficult question to put out to...
That's up to this board to decide.
Any, any type of development that goes in there, restaurant...
That would be up to this board to make that kind of a decision, I guess, because you say that you, you don't control.
Well, the board should then ask for a lighting plan submitted with the application.
Okay. I'm sorry, I stepped on your...
Is that in your regulations? Is that in your regulations? My understanding is, is that's handled during development plan review.
I, I, I think that the concerns that the board raises about lighting... Sorry. Sitting here, listening to it, the concerns the board raises about lighting, there's going, there's going to be light, the lights are on, I understand that. Someone sitting across the street will see the lights on. The lights are going to be designed not to shine at the houses across the street. That's, I, probably the best that can be said about it, is that, I mean, a light in a building far away, you could, or 100 feet away, or across the street, you see, it's not gonna be a light that, that's directed out at the neighbor, the neighboring residential houses that are across the street. And I think that's what Hussein is trying to say, is it's gonna be designed to light the area, to not spill over into the neighboring properties. But when you look at the site, you'll see it.
That was my point.
But any use, well, any use of the site will have lights. If it, if it's an issue for the 24/7 request, then I understand that. I don't know how you would do anything on the site without having some lights from 6:00 on, that, I mean, you can engineer as much as you want, but someone will look across the street and see the lights are on.
Yeah, I was, I was driving, I was at the, at a house across the street, and it occurred to me that I might be able to see that facility when it suddenly came, it was all bushes and trees, and then, and an old house.
Yes.
Without lights at night. And then all of a sudden, boom.
And, and I, I guess that, to address that issue for the board, I, I, other than line of sight and vision for traffic purposes, Mr. Archer, I'm sure, would be able to do something in the way of a buffer to the lighting. But at this point, what Hussein is saying is, it was not something specifically engineered for the zoning board.
I understand.
If, if it's a condition the board requires...
I asked you to answer the indeterminable, as it turns out to be, but I shouldn't be so worried about the retina of the eye, it was...
I, I, I don't know what, what a better answer would be, because anything that goes in...
There is no answer.
No, there's no, the lights are gonna be on.
Okay, that's, we end, we can end that right there.
I'd, I'd still like to discuss buffer zones as well, because I also feel that's before us, and things that we can condition. So I would like you to address the, what you are gonna do for buffers, to some of the residential neighbors.
Sure, and, and, I mean, subject to you commenting, jumping in, I mean, the, the two options that are available are to either put up a, a large fence, or to put vegetative buffers in there, that will grow, how, 12 feet?
So what's, what is your proposal?
I, I don't know.
Because part of our decision is based on your proposal.
At this point, like I previously mentioned, we initially had 10 feet of a buffer along the parking spaces. But budding Riley Road, we increased it to 20, so we could provide some sort of landscape buffer. If the planning board, or your, your board feels that landscaping is not adequate, we can agree to put a fence up beyond those parking spaces towards the back. There's wetlands in the back of the property that we cannot touch. The wetlands have overgrown vegetation that are, that are existing there. The closest residential unit off of Riley Road, in the back, is about 500 feet from our proposed curb. So there's ample vegetation there to serve as your, your buffer. Again, we're providing more landscaping there, we, we could provide landscaping buffers, or we can provide a fence. The board wants a fence, we'll propose a fence along Riley Road. The vegetative buffer to the east, all that is remaining undeveloped. So whatever's there currently will, will stay there. We will cut back any vegetation along the site frontage to help out with the site distance, as requested by the traffic consultant. We, we wouldn't wanna plant any trees in the front of the property, because of the site distance, but maybe we can plant some decorative trees along the perimeter of the property as well. So those are things, again, that, in my experience, we haven't really had to address with any zoning boards in other communities. Typically, we're, we're going for the use, if there's a fence that you require, okay, we can put up a fence, but vegetation, at this point, is not designed, we don't have our landscape architect design all that at this point. So if you make a condition that it's, you know, per the development plan review, which, which is what we typically see from, you know, other communities, then we, that's what we have to address in order to get...
Well, I can understand, I can understand that there's ways of putting buffer zones, because we always do, everything we deal with, we deal with 40B projects and so forth, and we get involved with, you know, isolating and so forth, you can do it. And you could put buffers in there, and the folks down at, at the development down there, they raise the issue, we do read everything, that when the indigenous, is that the, I'm not very good in my...
Deciduous.
Deciduous trees, and the leaves all fall, and then they'd be able to see it. Well, that becomes a subjective thing, I would think, but you could checkmate that by putting evergreens, so that, there are ways of circumventing it. But then when you get to the, the, the one that's most difficult to resolve, is the one that you can't resolve, to the, to the satisfaction of, of the recipient of the objectionable light, and that's the one that we discussed earlier. But I think we can move on from that subject, because you can't answer the question, and I can agree you can't answer the question. But, so there, and now, members of the board?
Again, the lighting is directed downward. Lighting is directed downward. Previously, in the past, they would have lighting that was directed toward...
No, I understand that, and we're, and we're, we're very diligent about, about lighting that's projecting off the property line. We get cases where we come across, and Mr. Keating down there has all the lights up to people from stealing from him, so he puts up lights to protect his property, and we would agree that's nice. But if he puts one light that turns around, and it's like a beacon, and when you come around the curve in a rainstorm, you're ready to crash into a wall or something. So we go there, and we say, no, you can't do that, and they say, yeah, I think you're right, we didn't think about it. And I'm sure that you, as diligent people, would make sure that nothing comes off, and if it does, then we would object to it, and you'd be, we'd be talking. So I think you've, and properly answered the questions as to what you can do, and you would appropriately do. I would agree with that.
Thank you.
So is there any other questions?
Yeah, we didn't get his question answered.
Pardon?
I don't know if, did you get your question answered?
Who, me?
No.
Yeah, I, I...
I think the answer is gonna be...
I think they answered, I think what you're saying is, what, we may, depending on how it goes, I have no idea, but we may, you know, condition a buffer zone, whether, leave it up to the planning board what it's gonna be, because they are gonna do a site, but we may condition, especially along Riley Road.
There is a buffer provided, there's a 20-foot minimum buffer.
I know there's a 10-foot provider, but I'm talking about...
20 and 40, in the two locations along Riley Road, as a buffer.
As a buffer, correct.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about a visual buffer, not just grass.
Fence, or, yes. No, we would, we would provide landscaping, but if the board so wishes to have a fence, that's...
Again, and we, I, I personally, depending on how this even goes, would leave that up to the planning board at that time, but I would condition some sort of a buffer.
Any other questions?
Yes, with regards to noise, all this has been on light and everything, but I live in an area, too, on a valley, and there's a house up, up the street, it was built the same time as mine, and they love to listen to the radio with high bass, or high amps, and incessantly, you know, that thump, thump, thump. What can you do about minimizing a certain amount of noise pollution that might be added to an area that may exist along Route 2 with cars? They understand that. But by adding anything else with additional 24/7 business, and the possibility of 24/7 speakers outside and stuff like that, what can be done about minimizing the intrusion of noise pollution that carries for miles?
Vegetation. What do you normally do? Typically, so typically, you handle that with, again, a long Route 2A that's difficult to provide a landscape buffer to drown out some of the noise. But around the perimeter of the property, we typically put landscaping, evergreen, arborvitae, fence, that, that drowns out some of the noise spillover from any, any potential commercial property. So those, those are things, like the fence, you know, might drown out some of the noise onto Riley Road. But again, the direct abutters, you know, across the street, there's really, not much you can do with landscaping in the front, because you wanna maintain that sightline. You don't wanna create a, a problem by, you know, planting large arborvitae's along your frontage. But around, around the perimeter, again, we have the wetlands buffer that's, that's staying as-is, we're not touching the wetlands buffer. There's a 5, 30-foot no disturb, and a 50-foot, I believe, no build. So we're not touching that with, with anything.
I, I would ask the question to, an understanding of the question. Is the noise pollution coming from kids and cars? Is that where the pollution source, or from the restaurant itself?
I think anything, once you introduce a business, any business 24/7, you're introducing another noise level.
From where?
Even just from the business itself.
From the business itself, whatever, whatever's coming, whatever, whatever that business consists of, whether that's cars coming and going, whether that's people milling around, whether that's the business churning out, you know, lumber, or something like that.
I was trying to put it in context. Okay.
General noise of the business.
You know, if, if you have a, a park, and there's no one in the park, and all of a sudden you have someone sneak in a radio and sneak it behind a tree, and no one knows it's there, and someone goes by and turns it on and leaves, the radio's there, what are you gonna do about the noise that's, that's creating that wasn't there before?
Yeah, they, they enjoy, the neighbors enjoy Conrad saying, 12, 14?
Till a certain hour.
But, but it is there before, I guess.
But till a certain hour, also.
Okay.
Only until, right. They close at 10 or 11.
Right.
Okay.
I, I guess that when we're looking at, again, the uses that are allowed, and in our example of a dry, a fast-food restaurant, that wouldn't be required here, and wouldn't have to address these things, the issue is...
You're going back to McDonald's now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So...
Well, Burger King, no respect.
We cut to the chase.
Mr. Archer can, I didn't wanna give any more advertising.
It's all right, I'll help you.
You know, I mean, Mr. Archer can take proactive measures to address things, if it was a requirement by the board, specifically, you know, other than telling drivers they can't, you know, they have to shut off their cars, again, it becomes an issue with any, any business that's going to have cars coming in and out, people staying in their cars while they're waiting on lines, is going to have that kind of an issue. The permitted uses, the allowable uses, would have those issues, you wouldn't have any regulation over them. Mr. Archer would address, to the best that he can, that issue, but again, when you look at his proposed use versus uses allowed as a matter of right, his use wouldn't create any more, wouldn't be any det, more detrimental than our example, which is the McDonald's, as far as that impact. I mean, that, that's the, the best answer I, I think can be presented, unless somebody is able to engineer a, some kind of buffer, noise buffer.
Well, I, I, I beg to differ in the fact that your own traffic study said that the gas station provides 50% of the traffic is from a gas station. So if it was a restaurant, or a drive-thru, you'd have 50% less vehicles there, 50% less traffic. That's what you said in your own study, you said that the gas station was 63 new vehicles in the AM, a drive-thru was 48, and a deli was 19. If I add 48 and 19, I'm coming around the same thing. If I look at the, if I look at the PM, the numbers are even more skewed than that.
You don't even wanna get, you don't even wanna get invited up here, do you?
Yeah, that's all specific to the size of the site. If you put a McDonald's in, or something, that would be a 3,000-square-foot building that would generate more traffic than that deli that we're putting in.
Well, the building could only be 25% of the whole site, so it wouldn't be a 3,000-square-foot McDonald's.
It would be larger, it would be larger, because 25% of that site would be massive.
Could be large.
So you, it's not, it's, that's, that is true for this particular site, but it's not true for a different development on the site.
So the traffic study, taking into consideration the 3,900-square-foot building, the restaurant components are not 3,900 square feet, they're smaller components of that larger restaurant. So she took each component and developed the trips based on those smaller areas. So your 50% is not correct, because if a restaurant were to come in, they're 5,000-square-foot restaurant by right, any restaurant would generate, I don't know how much, but you take those numbers and you bump 'em up. You can't, you can't equate that to a restaurant.
I, I'm just going by the numbers I'm given.
Those are numbers that are presented for this plan, though. Those are numbers that are presented for this development.
All right, so...
You can't take that traffic study and use it somewhere else.
I guess what we're, one of the questions that I would ask, is we've, you've been, two questions have been addressed to you. One is a buffer, as far as, you know, for the, for preventing lights, like headlights and things like that. One is a buffer to do something with noise, that is under this board. What I'm asking you guys is, right now, what are you proposing to this board that you're gonna do? Don't say we could do a fence, we could do this. What are you proposing you are going to do, that would might satisfy us with the coinciding with the neighborhood, and coinciding with what's going on? What you would propose you're gonna do for, to mitigate the noise, which would be, you know, whatever you're gonna do, and to mitigate the idea of headlights and things, and things like that, into imposing residential areas?
The landscape buffers that we are proposing on the plan. We increased the landscape buffers, we, we removed the car wash component, which was a noise, that was, that was one of the considerations as well, at this point. That, that was a noise maker.
But what I see...
It's removed.
Okay, so what I see here is, I just see grass. I don't see anything where you're showing me where there's any buffer above 6 inches. You know, what's buffer above 6 inches? What's stopping the noise from traveling? What's stopping the headlights from traveling from the parking spot over to the poor neighbor who's to the, from looking at the site to the left of the site? I mean, I'm just asking you these simple questions, and I'm asking what your proposal is, is this, as, as you've been the architecture on the site.
Before you ask them to go, continue this meeting and go back for a new development plan, before you do that.
I haven't done that, I'm just asking.
No, no, but you're getting there, okay. I, I, one thing that sticks hard in my mind, I got a little list here, I got a little list here. Is it okay if I talk?
No, please don't.
I'm cutting you off.
No, that's, oh, no, it was the answer, not mine anymore.
Okay, I, I took a little list. I like to do everything I can on 8 and 1/2 by 11. If I can't, if it goes beyond that, I'm in trouble. I'm too old to comprehend.
Should I go before you, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
Should I go before you?
Before I do it.
So, I'm just, you know, in relation to the board and this particular application...
So, I'm just, you know, in relation to the board and this particular application, you know, we look at, obviously, every application independently, and for me, you know, it's a balancing test, you know, the rights of the landowner, the rights of the applicant, the rights of the abutters, and the rights and the intent of the bylaw, and quite honestly, you know, I listened to, you know, the last time that everybody had, you know, the opportunity to speak, and then again tonight, and, you know, I'm struggling with, we understand that it's a commercial property, my struggle internally is the proposed gas station in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, and I'm not quite sure that it is, and only in the respect that we have certain standards and criteria once we, you know, give the special permit, and one of those criterias is the, you know, the affecting value of the land, the abutters, and I can only think about when I was there, so I've been there to the site a couple times, once, a couple times during the day, and then just the other night, I was just parked there for a minute, and I just thought about, you know, the gas station going up and just the traffic and volume being generated just by the nature of the business, and the abutters directly across, the two houses across from that, and how they feel, and, you know, what the value of their land is going to be once this gas station goes in, and I think, you know, one of the criteria, you know, in 8.3, 0.3, 0.2 in granting this special permit is, you know, the Board of Appeals shall assure that the proposed use will not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood, and/or on the amenities of the neighborhood, and I'll be honest with you, I'm struggling with that, because I think not so much Stone Farm, but the abutters directly across from the gas station, who would be the brunt of the cars generated in and out during the day and at night with all the traffic generated from the property, and, you know, quite honestly, that's what I'm struggling with, because I understand that, you know, you didn't zone it commercial, we did, the town did, so you're just coming into, you know, a piece of property, you have a use, and you're requiring a special permit from this board to do it, but there are certain criteria that we have to meet and we have to live by when we grant the special permit, and I'm struggling that you've convinced me that the value of the land will not be adversely affected, because the other issues that I have, I think that could be worked out, whether it's the landscaping, I mean, quite honestly, you know, the 24/7, it's a little tough for me for a gas station at that location, you know, everybody says, you know, go down and take a look at the one on Lemmonster Shirley Road, you know, we all talk about uniformity, but circumstances are different, that's a completely different neighborhood than what we're talking about here, I think the neighborhood in this particular location, if you took, you know, visually take the gas station and put it in this neighborhood, I'm not quite sure that it's the intent of the bylaw to be able to allow that personally, and that's what I'm struggling with, I think the sign, you know, I've seen, you know, workable things, I've seen the signs and Acton where it's a, you know, a mobile station or whatever, and they have a sign that's five feet or six feet off the ground, and you know it's a gas station when you're driving by, let's be honest, I mean, it's a gas station, it's a Dunkin' Donuts, whatever. The lighting, I think, is an issue, you know, one could only drive by at night when you go down Route 13, there's a car dealership up there, it's pitch black until you get to it, and all of a sudden you see that just the light being eliminated, even though it's on their property, it's illuminating, and then, you know, I'm struggling with the building value of the abutters, and, you know, I don't know how you respond to that or address that, but that's one of the major conflicts, because in my conscience, I don't know, you know, that, I can't, I'm struggling with that, that the value of the neighborhood, you know, that it's going to adversely affect the two people across the street from, that are residents.
Thank you.
No.
I have, no, you can't talk from the floor, that's the board, I'm sorry. The discussion is at the board, unless the board is ready to invite you, and we might, by the way, so stand fast.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, well, you know, I don't know, I mean, I think that the applicant has to, you know, convince me otherwise, I guess.
I got my checks.
Well, I know, but you might be, I could be quick if you're going to be...
No, I got to rip my paper up and throw it away. Go ahead.
No, well, thanks, everybody, for being here, this is, I think, the best attended meeting since I've been on the board anyhow. I wish to apologize for my poor choice of the word when I characterize Stone Farm as a retirement community, I am sorry for that, I didn't mean to, my mother's 82 and she continues to work to this day, so if she heard me, she'd be upset with me. On the other hand, though, as far as my fellow member said in the valuation, you've got a piece of property that's becoming more dilapidated as time goes by, and I'm not sure how that's enhancing the value of the properties that the butts it, it seems to me that if this is rejected, somebody else is going to come along, and we're going to fight that, and then somebody else's, and the port, the whole time, the Riley's, I mean, if you're paying $10,000 a year in property tax, they can't afford to maintain this building, and it's going to become more and more and more rundown, I would surmise at some point, they're just going to abandon it, start paying taxes, and then it's going to become a burden on the town, they're going to have to go to tax court, they're going to have to take the property, and then what is the town going to do with a piece of property? It's zoned commercial, that's when the barn door was opened, that's when the horse left, it's too late to put it back in, I am sorry to say, but that is just the reality of the situation, it is a commercially zoned piece of property. Someone could come in there right now, put a Denny's in, which doesn't involve a drive-in, which is open 24/7, I'm not saying that's going to happen, someday someone is going to come along and want to put a piece of commercial business on this property, so this may be the devil you know versus the devil you don't know, and who knows what's going to happen in the future, and that's just, that's my two cents, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You ready for my page?
Yes.
Anybody else want to talk?
You can't have anything new.
Well, I tell you what I did, I put it all down, and I put a zip through it, and I have it in this end, what do you give me, two mics?
Yes, just in case, stereo.
ABC, which channel are we on? Anyway, the issues that I find, I came across some things that were, each, I plucked a little out of each letter and each mail and each telephone call, there weren't too many telephone calls, I made most of them outbound. The, it's interesting, the federal, FNA, Fannie Mae, is that who it is, that agency?
Yeah.
If a gas station is within 300 feet of a proposed house, they won't give you the money, and I said, "That's ridiculous," so I checked it out, I thought someone was kind of smoking me a little bit, and I went to another banking agency, and they said, "Yeah, that's true, they don't do it." Well, then, when you get that and you say, "That's a major obstacle," you say, "Well, there are other banks, so is that reason enough to deny?" I didn't think so. The road line of sight, we have a nice technical description, you have to go through the math, and I'm glad I had a mathematician to the left and the right of me taking notes that can reinterpret it at some day, point in time, but I took the telephone method, and that's 100 feet between telephone poles, and it comes out that it's about 300, and you get about 10 seconds when the first car appears, 10 seconds before it's at your site. I happened to be standing with the owner of the house across the way, I missed her name, but she's a policeman in Nashua, she's very slight lady, I don't know how she takes down a 250-pounder, but she must have pretty good karate lessons, but anyway, so I'm standing with her, and she says, "Oh, when I come out of the driveway, I got a pause," and I'm standing at the end of the driveway, and I said, "Look," and we're looking down over 300 feet, and I counted to 10 seconds while she was there, and the car finally hit us, and I said, "Boy, I can make a decision in 10 seconds, even at my age, that could happen," you know, so, and then I checked the other way, in the other opposite direction, and it was about the same, and that curve comes on, and it was before the curve comes in. I have trouble, and I spoke to it before, and it probably doesn't belong at this meeting, but the Stone Farm exit, that could be managed, I think if I lived there, I would want to change, but that's okay, it has nothing to do, so I got 300 feet the other way, so to me, without taking the technical aspects of load and unload and how many cups of coffee, I think normally when you drive down, and I do pass gas stations on the way, there is one, and I never find it hard to make a decision and be able to come in and come out regardless of the traffic load, somebody's filling their tank, and so that turns around to say that I'm satisfied as a citizen, if I live there, would I be safe getting gas here and there? Then I get to the crosswalk, oh, the outer, the stone condos, you're all going to boo now, because I've driven that at least six times, and those houses are pretty far away, I live on a lake, we're talking about close, that's close, but the, those houses are so far away from the gas station, I think it's in the mind to say, "I don't want a gas station here," not because it will interfere with me or to diminish things, I don't think it will, but that was my opinion, my opinion only, so you don't need to boo, because you're holding to your opinion, and I respect that. The crosswalk, it already exists, the crosswalk, there is a crosswalk there, and they do manage it, and then if the church is releasing people, they do oversee, I would assume, and I would certainly hope, if the kitties are walking by, that they just let them run wild, but it's always there, and there'd be an incremental difference, and that incremental difference is in the study report, how many more units will come in and out, and I didn't think that that was, in my mind, not the board's, but mine, that the crosswalk there, being in that position, is there, and it handles whatever comes to it, and there are stop signs, and you've got to get, I stop all the time with the crosswalk, that finds too heavy for me, goes out of my budget, so the noise of the, someone wrote noise of speakers, well, I didn't know where that came from, because if you're driving up and you pass the window, and I talk to a person, it doesn't project off the road down the highway, I mean, it's like a private conversation we have there, and so you've got to be careful what you say, but the, but, so they wouldn't have speakers like Conrad's, and I spoke of that before, so I didn't find that to be problematic. The car wash needed to have it, and I see they've taken it away, because I would object strongly against the car wash, based on what already appears at the gas station down the road on 2A, where the car wash is right near the road, and you get ice and hazards and so forth. Then I come to the hours of operation, it's, the question came to my mind, and somebody smarter than me was talking about quiet enjoyment, quiet enjoyment becomes important, and we get issues of, I'll be back to that one, signage, the signage, in my opinion, is not compatible with the neighborhood, and that's the big sign, the one that we granted down at Lemmonster Shirley Road. Down on Lemmonster Shirley Road, the sign sits there proudly, it works, does its job, and it harms no person, but can it suddenly become problematic in Lunenburg, along that road, to have that big sign coming straight up? It's strange, because when you go to Pennsylvania or something, and you're driving this country, and the deers are running across, and all of a sudden, way in the sky is this big sign that says, "Mobile," you know, oops, well, sorry about that, so, but the sign issue can be dealt with, in my opinion, but the, so we dealt with the signs, but everything narrowed down to one thing, was my visit to the young lady, the police officer, who was across the road, and the house was beside it, there's a gentleman that's there, but he wasn't home, but I sat there, and I looked, and having a house with quiet enjoyment, to plunk a big gas station right there with all its glowing lights, even though they don't come off, they were all inward, they're there for my eyes to see, and to have quiet enjoyment in my home is the most important thing. I happen to live on a lake, and Mr. Keating is, was there, they sold it out, and the Irish folks owned it, I guess, but the, and I go out and I fish at night, and I'm fishing, and I'm fishing, and 11 o'clock, all of a sudden, everything came to life, because Mr. Keating, or whoever deals down there, got a special deal from the power company that if they went off-peak hours, they'd get a better rate. Well, let me tell you, quiet enjoyment went away, and that was unacceptable, and I knocked on their door, and they soon took it down, they don't do that no more, so I'm not slightly disturbed, what was your expression, your, your...
Harmony was one of them.
Your what?
Harmony?
No, 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 your expression of how upset you, you hadn't quite arrived at a decision.
Right.
You said you have, I've forgotten your words, what?
Struggling.
Struggling, yeah, I don't struggle, and I'm only me, just one person, I don't struggle with it, and I went through all of the lists there, and I probably said, turned against all you folks, that I thought that your arguments were not strong enough for me not to allow someone who had a right to put a business there, but that poor little lady right across the road gets a solid no from me, a denial, because that can't be rectified, you can't put bushes and greens up there, she's in her home, she's there for several years, she, for her to suddenly tomorrow have this glaring thing sitting in front of her house, 7:20, 24/7, I always say it wrong, for 24/7 to have all of that activity coming in, that she's in the quiet of the evening, she has no more quiet evenings anymore, so I think I've just spoke to the way my thoughts are, and I, aside from that, I could say yes, but that says hard no to me, I don't know what the board thinks of it, and I've said my piece. Gentlemen, the chair will accept a motion.
I think he just, he needs to go.
I hear none.
I was kind of, sorry, I had, Mr. Chairman, I had kind of asked a question earlier.
Oh, you weren't, you...
I never got...
No, I gave you, I said to you, "Shall I talk?" And you said, "Go ahead."
Well, I thought you were going to say your thing, just in case you had more questions for him, but the fact is, is that I still waiting for what the owner's proposal was.
Oh, 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 to get to you, yeah, because I was interrupting you, I remember that now.
Okay, thank you.
It was back, I said before you do that and put shrubbery, I just made a hard case, why are we going to put more shrubbery on, why are we going to redo the drawings? Don't we have enough information now? That's my opinion, one person.
I guess I'm saying, I don't, I don't have enough...
No, no, I said the chair will accept the motion, we can, we can go on and discuss them forever. If the chair is not ready, then you go ahead.
Well, I guess I would like to hear what the proposal would be for how they would mitigate noise, light, and things of that sort.
Oh, by the way, I just want to tear off one thing, I had to say this, because I didn't give you the last reason, the reason in granting the special permit, we had a four criterion, where it fails, see, I never told you where it fails, that in granting a permit would not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities thereof, and I root my hard thought in B of the four requirements that are required for the special permit, and then I also think when I did that, I have to make a decision, any decision that I would make, and the board would obviously be, is it arbitrary and capricious, and is it defendable, is your decision defendable in the courts, because we never know when, someone's got 20 days after we, after we make our decision, which is about 14 days, and then 20 days later, you can appeal it to Superior Court, anybody can appeal any decision of this board, and that's the, and by the way, for the folks who don't know, any... And that's the, and by the way, for the folks who don't know, any decision by this board requires a supermajority. If we get five members that will vote, there's six members here, one won't vote on this thing, there'll be five here, where he could ask questions, but he, he doesn't vote, these five of us will. And it requires a supermajority, so four out of five have to say, if it's the majority three to two, it fails, it's denied. So that's how the voting will go. Go ahead.
Okay, so, the floor's yours for a moment.
Can I talk for a second?
Sure.
Gary Archer, I'm the applicant, as you probably know from last time. Basically, I'm here, I wanna work with the board. You're talking about buffer, things like that. What do you want? Do you want a fence? Happy to put a fence up. Do you want bushes? Happy to do that. I wanna work with you. I'm not here to oppose you, or try to, try to fight the system, or whatever you wanna call it. I'm here to, to work with you. I'm a small business person, I mean, I have a very good name in the community, been doing business for 48, 49 years, just letting you know. And I'm not a big corporation that's gonna come in and say, this is the way we do it, mobile, we're done. I'm not that person. I'm the person that's gonna be here, I'm the person that's gonna work it, I'm the person that's gonna be in the community with the people, and I'm the person that's gonna, gonna be the, the right person to talk to. If there's a question or problem, I'm gonna address, that's the kind of person I am. You came to my side, I appreciate you doing that. A couple of things I, I wanna address, if I could, real quick about that. You talked about my sign on my own, and that sign was short like that, and I'm allowed to go X amount of feet. On my own, I said, I want to look right, so I dropped it down a bit. And the town didn't ask me to do that. I, on my own, did that. And you talked about a, a one-way on two roads, that's not true. I think you might, maybe missed that.
But there's an arrow.
There's an arrow on the, on the, on the top one. We did it as well, because we wanna keep the people from going into that very tight turn into that 119 busiest highway, one of the busiest highways in the state. So on our own, we did that for safety reasons. It's just one way, just the people can come in, can't go out. And also, the truck comes in to deliver, he comes in, and that's what he uses that for. But if you guys want something, lighting, et cetera, I talked about earlier before, I'd do a lighting matrix plan. We'd have lighting, flat deck canopy, lighting come down directly. It's, it's out. It's not facing towards the people, it's not facing towards the neighbors. I'm gonna make sure it doesn't spill onto the outside of the property, I'm gonna contain it. I also wanna make sure that people come to my place as safe. So I need to have certain lighting to protect the people, but not to, not to disrupt the neighbors, or the people around us, or make people feel like, oh, this is awful. I'm not going, I'm not going to something that's gonna be intrusive, or something that's not gonna work. I'm gonna do something that works properly for my business, and a business person, and for the community. But I've gotta make sure my customers are safe, that's really important to me. There was something else. Any questions so far?
I, thank you.
Twenty-four, can I talk about 24 hour, seven, 24/7 for a minute?
That was the next question.
Let me talk about that for a minute. There's a couple of things. I don't know if this would be a 24-hour-a-day operation, 24/7, but I would like to have the-
That's in front of this board.
Well, this is what I'm asking for, I'm asking for 24/7. And I'm not saying that I'm gonna do 24/7, it all depends what the business does. If there's, if there's people there that, there's, there's a need for it, there's three shifts. I mean, these days, people work three shifts. That's just the way it is, hospitals, police, firemen, things like that, that happens. And people need, there's a need. So if there's a need, and there's business enough, I'd like to use my, you know, elect my option to be able to open up. I am open up in Air in Littleton. I'm off highway in Littleton, and Air is very busy. It's a walking community, there's a lot of people downtown, there's a lot of people that are going to the third shift. So that's important to me. The other reason I like 24/7 is a bunch of things. If these people in the middle of the night wanna come for a paper, or go for a cup of coffee, or something like that, I'm there. But again, it has to work for my business plan. The other thing is, I have a lot of inventory in the place. I have a lot of, you know, whether it's, whether it's cash on the property from an ATM, or the cash from the day's receipts, or inventory in the building, there's a lot of inventory. And you know what, frankly, you have someone in there, they're cleaning at nighttime, making the place clean and spotless, and I hope you liked my place in Littleton, I'm very proud of that. And I hope you, you like what you saw. That's the kind of image I'm gonna portray in this community. But also, it's a security guard, if you will. It's a person that can protect my assets, and make sure people are safe, and, and we're doing the right things. So any other questions?
I, I guess, I guess, hey, well, let me address, because one of the largest concerns have been with the noise, the traffic and things like that, and that, and the idea of the neighbor, that as he talked, as they talked about, the neighbor seeing this beacon throughout the whole evening. I guess the question is, is how hard, say, how hard-fast are you on 24/7?
I'd like to have 24/7, again, for all the reasons I mentioned. I'd like to have it for, again, security, I'd like to have it for protection of, of the assets I have on the property. There's a lot of reasons. I mean, I'd like to have 24/7, yes, like, I don't wanna be limited to that. Not saying that I'll be that way, but I don't wanna have limitation on that.
I'm, you know, I think that's kind of part of, a tough part of my decision.
Well, if, I mean, if it comes down to that's the dead drop thing, I mean, you see my position, security, and make sure that, that things are protected properly, and, and, you know, people drive through doors and take ATMs out. And if it was, it was, sorry, but if that was, if that was the, the, you know, hard fact, yes or no, then I'd say, let me work with you. Why don't we do a, you know, midnight, or 11 o'clock, or whatever.
Which is in front of this board right now, is 24/7, is what's the issue, is that this board is about ready, if it, if it wants to?
Right, yeah.
To vote.
So you're, you're asking us, in what, what obviously has been, the whole argument is, one of the arguments is that this is, that folks are having is, that this is a residential area, which happens to have one plot of land that's owned commercial. And we understand that, and I do, I do sympathize with everybody who looking to try to do something here. But you're asking, what you're trying to say to us is that, if you had a house, you, if you had a neighbor, you want them partying 24/7, okay? You want them to have the lights on, then, then the folks going, the noise coming, 24/7 as your neighbor. So you said to us that you wanna be part of the community, and things like that. I will ask again, how hard-fast are you on 24/7?
I'm not, if that's the case, if that's the, the breaking point.
But that's not what's in front of the board this moment.
That's correct. You're asking us to approve this for a 24/7 business, so.
Wasn't that the planning board's purview?
No.
Mr. President?
Yeah, but we can condition that based on the special permit. So that's, that's-
I know, we talked about that earlier.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not convinced, I'm-
We always, we always define the hours. And, and by the way, we're not taking, we're not taking it off the table, the seventh, the 24/7's on the table now. If the chair calls for a motion, then we bring the motion, and we discuss the motion. And 27, 24/7 is on the table. And if we, and then we ask, and you discuss it, and then we make a vote. And it lives and it dies based on what the board says. The only thing, you got a small hint for me, where I might be.
I think you got a small one for me.
Small, yeah.
So where are we? The chair is going to accept, the chair, again, I'll repeat, the chair will accept a motion, if there's, unless there's some other reason, then we're not on this path. The applicant could, could withdraw without prejudice?
If the motion-
By the way, by the way, if the board will allow, he could request it of the board, to withdraw without motion, and that would be up to the board, or we'd have to poll the board to say, will we allow you to withdraw without mo, without prejudice? That's one thing that's on the table. The other is, bring it to a vote. I don't know where you wanna be.
If the, if the board is suggesting that the options are either to vote on it, or withdraw it, and amend to reduce the, or remove the 24 hours?
Well-
Or to request a motion to remove the 24 hours?
If we, if we could, if we could allow, you could ask the board to amend the motion, to amend the hours, and then see if the board will accept that. If they, they can or they cannot, it depends upon, because you're requesting the board to, to amend the, the, the application that's in front of us. I don't know how the board would go with that.
It, it would seem probably more expeditious, save time to request to amend and remove that request for 24 hours, rather than to withdraw and go through this whole process again. So if the board would accept-
Well, we don't work in 24-hour cycles, we work in one-month cycles.
Yes.
If you are requesting that the, if the, requesting, again, it gets, it's to the board, to ask for a continuance, to a date and time cer, certain, for the reason to reevaluate your proposal to, to the board, and then come back, and that would be in a one-month's timeframe. I suppose I'm gonna, I'm gonna poll the board on, on their willingness to go down that road.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, are you gonna, I, I need to, just a clarification of order. Are they allowed today to amend it by removing the 24/7? Or would they have to come back to remove the 24/7?
They could do it now.
Right.
They could, they could, they could, they could do it and say, they, they're gonna come up with a new, a new time. And what will that do? That would soften, I guess, my objection. Wouldn't define it, wouldn't end it, you know, to the affirmative, I don't know where I'd go with it, I'd have to ponder that. So-
I think you're getting the feel of which way the board's going. Do you wanna request to withdraw the 24/7, and?
Yes, yes, we would request to withdraw.
I think we have a request for the-
24/7 provision.
And, and what would the hours be now?
Right, what would the new hours be?
5:00 AM to 11:00.
No one is kinda late.
What's that?
I go to bed at 11:00.
Right, so 5:00 to 11:00.
Perfect, right to 11:00.
5:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Okay.
I'd like to vote that we accept the applicant's revision of hours.
Second.
Thank you. As stated from 5:00 to 11:00.
Okay, the, the motion's been made and accepted to modify the, I'm getting the feedback here. The, the hours of operation from 5:00 to 11:00. Is there any further discussion on the matter? No discussion?
I think it's normal, standard operating procedure for, I guess, a gas station.
Pardon?
I said, those, those are normal hours. I think 24/7 is a little excessive, personally, in that neighborhood.
24/7 is what?
Excessive, in that neighborhood.
Yeah, so you're agreeing to the, the motion that's made?
Better than 24/7.
No.
Yeah, I do, I agree. I think 5:00, 5:00 to 11:00 is acceptable to me.
So we're gonna allow the, the petition to modify?
Call for vote.
Pardon?
Call for vote on the amendment.
I'm gonna.
Oh, sorry.
I'm getting ready.
Gotcha, we're prepared.
So the, the request, the motion is to allow the petition, I get it right, we gotta terminate this meeting shortly, I'm running out of steam.
Bedtime, Mr. Chairman.
So, okay. Is he leaving us?
He's getting your water.
Oh, I'm recovered. I'm sucking on a peppermint, and it's drying my throat. Thank you, friend.
No problem.
Yeah, shouldn't have put that peppermint down there. Okay. All those in favor of granting the modification?
Aye.
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 Well, I guess aye. So now that we have in front of us is the same proposal with the modification of the operating hours. I'm running out of steam.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the special permit for the gas station and the drive-thru. For purposes of discussion.
Okay, um, okay. Can, can we add that the, that we, the recommendation that the, the sign, the, regarding the sign and the size of the sign?
Yeah, well, the motion's on the table, it's gonna be second, then we discuss.
I'll second the motion.
What's the motion, please?
That we grant the special permit for the garage and the drive-thru, and the sign. Mr. Signet, please. The gas station, the drive-thru, and the sign.
So I, I, I think I shared my, my concern about the sign last time. It's, it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. And I wouldn't accept it as it stands now. Leamester Shirley Road's a, like, different, different application. I think if, if the applicant is willing to work with the board, or willing to work with the neighborhood, I think he has to come up with some acceptable sign. Regardless, you have to go to, to the, to the planning board. I don't feel comfortable voting in favor as, 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 as the sign stands today. I think it needs to be in, in, in keeping with the, the neighborhood. So that's, that's my two cents to the board. I'm not in favor of the pylon.
I echo, I echo your sentiments, we go in the sign. It's way, it's way, way too over the top for where it, where it is.
Well, we've-
You don't need that height on those sightlines.
Yes. That's right. We've just determined that the sightlines are not that great, so I don't think, that height, you'll be, they'll be missing your sign.
You're not on an interstate. Would you like to make a counterproposal?
Love to. I've got an idea. You wanna talk about that?
No, we can talk about it. All right, um, on the sign, instead of a pylon sign at 22 feet, it's right now, there's a mobile on the very top, a convenience store, retail, I can't read from here, but, drive, the deli use.
So a mobile, convenience store, drive-thru shop, and then the two fuel signs, mounted on a pole?
Right. I'd like to reduce that to a mobile, one sign instead of the two, so the convenience store, or, or the, um, drive-thru use, keep the two fuel signs, and mount that on a four-foot-high brick base, it's a monument sign, and the sign is set back enough that it would not, you know, impede any sightlines.
So what are you proposing is the total height?
Right, I have to do the math.
So, as, as I mentioned, we went and measured your sign in Littleton, that you mentioned that you'd done because you felt it was appropriate. Is a 10 foot 6 inch, that's, is what you have in Littleton sufficient for you here in Lunenburg?
Yes.
What's the square footage of that?
It's 10, well, it's 10 foot 6 tall by 6 foot 3 wide, however, I don't know the exact measurement from the pylon up to the sign itself. I know that's at least 3 feet. I mean, it might be 3-
Might be about 3 or 4 feet.
4 feet, so even if we said it was 4, that means it would be 6 foot 6 by, it's roughly, you know, 6 foot 6 square. That'd be 36, so, duh, 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 so you're not that far off of the actual town by law.
Similar to that, right.
Right, it's not gonna take long before everybody knows you're there, you're not really gonna need, it's gonna be a local place.
Well, I'd like to do, if I could talk about this for a second, unfortunately, you know, in my industry, you have to, you have to, um, display your price. And that takes 30% of your, of your signage, so, you know, obviously, the mobile sign, and I like to be able to at least advertise if I have a donut shop there, or a deli. So maybe that, when I could split in half, or something like that. So, that's my, that's my square footage there, if you wanna kinda talk about that, that's-
So the square footage would be reduced down to 67 and 1/2 square feet. The overall height, including the brick base, would be about 16 and 1/2 feet.
That's almost twice the size that you said you saw in-
Right, so what I'm asking is, is that that sign there, you have Littleton. I don't mind, you know, the pylon is fine, I'm just trying to, what I'm trying to do is make it look like as if it would be a tree, or something like, you know, something that's not obtrusive. As well as you, as we talked about, by your own traffic study, you have poor sightlines. So therefore, you want something that's lower, in my opinion, humble opinion, you want something that's lower, so that the people would see it, with the limited time they have to react, that we're talking about.
That's a lot of reasons I did Littleton that way. I had a chance to do, go higher, and it didn't, I chilled my-
So I guess what I'm asking is, is the size of Littleton, the size of Littleton is what you, you know, we just talked about, the 69, I mean, 39 square feet, very close to our bylaws, okay, which is nice. The height, though, is that 10 foot 6. And, you know, that's what I'm asking, is, is that 10 foot 6 height sufficient for you for what you wanna do?
I, the- I, yeah, I'm coming to the point where I think it's probably appropriate...
You can go with a shorter sign.
Since we're modifying the application, we have to...
Yeah, it's getting later now, Mr. Chairman.
We're modifying the hours, we're deleting the car wash, we're doing multiple changes to it, and I think that we, this board, anything that we approve has to be done in hot ink, to say, this is what we're approving. This is all conjecture, this is all making little notes, and we're gonna all sit and read, so I think that a continuation of this meeting to a date and time specific, to get very specific as to what we want, is in order.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, I, on that note, I think we should, you know, personally, the sign was an issue for me, um, the lighting's an issue, and the, and, you know, I think those things, you, you know, go back and work on, I will, between now and then, I am gonna go to Littleton and take a look at the sign over there, um, but I think the pylon's not gonna work for me, I think if you're gonna be a good, good neighbor, then I think, you know, this is your chance to come back to the board, and to the butters, and say, you know, this is what I'm gonna approve. I think it has to be the entire gas station, the building, the lighting, the signs, has to be in, in harmony with, with the neighborhood. So, I think I'd take a hard look at that, even, even on the, on the drawings you have, but if you take a hard look at what Stone Farm is there, you know, and, and, you know, keeping in that kind of architecture, you know, do your building, but maybe put clapboards on there, I, I, I don't know, but the bottom line is, I'd like to see, you know, as if it was there for 50 years. That's my personal opinion. And I think you've alleviated some of the issue on the building value of the butters by getting rid of the 24/7, which was a big concern for me.
Okay.
There was one issue, we give respect to the signs, when we did the Leamester Shirley Road, on the building, the, the, see, we, we restrict you to one sign on the building, 36 square feet, uh, and the second on the building of 18 square feet. We had come to conclusion that that was kinda tight, small, if you will, and they also had the, the name of the company, and they wanted to put, and it was country effect, to make it look like countrified with a peak roof...
Over the peak.
Slanted roof, with that in the center, and two signs for the, so you get Dunkin' Donuts and something else? What else you get? Nothing else?
Some kind of sandwich shop, I'm not sure yet.
Pardon?
Some kind of a sandwich shop of some, some kind.
So you have to think about what you want, so you're coming back here to propose...
Well, it'd be, it'd be a deli-type situation, I'm not sure what I'd, I'd use in there yet.
We allowed them to be a little bit bigger, because it was compatible with the size and structure of the thing, but then remember that the planning board is the one that approves, we can only recommend, that we did look at it, studied it, and became and recommended, so that would also be in order when you come back.
On this Plan B right here on the sign, if I propose this, obviously, the mobile at the top, and then the gasoline I have to have in there, I have to have that, but if I have two businesses in there, deli and, and some kind of coffee shop, I'd like to maybe at least split that. So it would be a little bit big in Littleton, because I have two businesses right there, that's why I'm asking for, just brick from the, from here, I'll get the height for you, but that's all I'm asking for, is I'll have a brick base, get rid of the pylon, and I'll do the gasoline, and split this here, and just have the mobile at the top.
So, so I guess, like we say, just come back with heights, and things of that, so you can, you know, whatever, whatever you want on it, that's fine, but, you know, there's just the size, size is a big concern...
Okay.
Of things. Now, you can do whatever you like, I mean, I can't see 4 foot, 4 feet of brick, if that's what you really wanna do, that's your choice, but, you know, you could do, play things there. You have the Stone Farm as an example of what things might look, you know, look like in that, for that area, so, please, feel free to...
Okay.
Use your imagination.
I think you have a good sense of what the board's looking for, what the neighbors, the community's looking for, and you say you wanna be a good member of the community, so...
I do.
You've got homework to do, and, and come back with a...
Okay.
Reasonable plan.
Okay.
Thank you, members of the board.
The Chair, we're not done. The, and by the way, when you're doing all the talking, don't put a peppermint out here, it tends to dry things up. I got my voice back, thank God.
November 12.
11/12, okay.
November 12.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Yeah, okay, Lisa gave me that. I've got it, Lisa. Okay, with that, the Chair's gonna accept the motion here.
Yeah, I'll move that we continue this hearing to November 12?
November 12.
7:00 PM.
7:00 o'clock. Second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, this, this meeting has been adjourned to, or continued, excuse me.
Thank you.
For the record, so the board has the package in front of them, when do you need these revised items back?
Well, you obviously learned we need it sooner than later, 10 days wasn't enough.
Just a week before, just a little faster. Faster than a week.
Follow-up. I just can't give us to the day of, people work, and they can read it.
Flag it with...